If you would all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, let's take a roll call. Phyllis?
Here.
Anthony? Tony?
Here.
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Larry? Larry? Okay, one, two, three, four, five. So we have a quorum. Is Lisa online?
She is.
I see her.
Everyone, so I didn't find the actual statement that I usually read at these meetings, but I just want to let them know that this meeting is convened in accordance with the governor's current executive orders, which allows the suspension of the open meetings law to allow meetings to be held in this format. And we have taken a roll call. A quorum is present, so this is a valid meeting. And we have confirmed with the secretary prior to the meeting that the notices were given and appropriately published, giving the information for the meeting. So, thank you, Paul.
Paul, can you hear me now?
Oh, good. Yes, Larry, you're here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, very good. All right.
So we have six.
So this is only Board of Appeals meeting for July. The meeting is broken up into two parts. First, the applicants describe what they want to do. The public can make any comments that they like. This is a Zoom meeting, so we'll try and keep some control over everything. At the end of the public hearings, it'll be closed, and then we'll deliberate. You're all welcome to pay attention to the deliberation, and we will vote. We don't take any comments at that time. You can wait for the results of our vote, or you can check with the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay? In that regard, I think we can start with, first is, well, Vassar College. Again, they've requested an adjournment until August 6th, so I would adjourn a motion to adjourn Vassar College's application until the August 10th, 2020 meeting.
I'm making that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that carries. So next is Stewart Shop. Is there someone here from Stewart's?
Yes, Chad Fowler from Stewart Shops.
Okay. So as I understand it, there's been a change in your position. There's an additional variance that needs to be addressed. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, do you want to talk about that tonight, or do you want to wait until you have more information?
I have Alec Glad with me. He can address that. And I also have Richard DeAndrea from Mazor Consulting to discuss traffic. Alec?
Okay.
Yeah, so we are prepared to address that.
Just a moment, okay.
Let me just swear everybody in. Do you all swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
Okay, then just state your name for the record, please.
So Alec Glad from Cuddy &amp; Fader, and we are prepared tonight to address the new variance that the town is requesting us to seek. But I'll turn it over to Chad, because I'll cover that in my part of the presentation, and he's going to start with an overview of the site plan and the changes since we were last here in February.
Hello again, Chad Fowler from Stewart Shops. I'm here before you. Just a brief overview. This is a 3,700 square feet convenience store, proposed with four gasoline dispensing points. One would have diesel also. We've been before the planning board multiple times and before this board one time. There had been some planned changes made to the plan, and I will share my screen if that's allowed.
Yeah, go ahead, Chad. That'll be fine.
Can you see the plan I have up?
We do.
Okay. This is the site plan that shows the 3,700 square foot building with the canopy with the four dispensers under it. Since we met last, we have moved the gasoline tanks in this area farthest away from the residential as possible. That was requested by this board. We've also added screening to the side, which we'll get to later in the landscaping plan, again, to shield from the neighbors and from the residential. We've widened and relocated the side entrance on South Gate Drive as far as we can from Route 9, and also widened it for better truck access, and also has been restriped with the "do not block the box" markings in South Gate Drive. And that was through the town and the highway superintendent. Currently, this is a car wash in a restaurant, over 10,000 square feet of building. It's predominantly commercial in nature, this area. Up and down Route 9 is very commercial. It's in the highway business zoning district. That district intent is to provide areas for commercial establishments that typically require direct auto access for a major arterial highway. We believe we have, we confirm that use. Stewart's proposal contemplates such a use by having a convenience store where we're showing it on this property. Our neighbors are to the north, and to the west is Red Lobster, a large restaurant. Across Route 9 is an auto dealership. It's friendly Ford. Across South Gate Drive is a deli, South Gate Deli, and there is a single-family residence right here. They face themselves on Oriole Drive. One Oriole Drive is the house number. So this area right here is residential. Everything else around us is commercial. I think we all know that this is a six-lane, Route 9 is a very busy road, six-lane highway. I do have some, and just to confirm, to show you what some of the lighting is, I mean, it is commercial. It's the commercial character of the area. I do have some nighttime photos from Oriole Drive, just to show you that it is a little commercial with the lights. This is existing. The lights you see are from the Ford dealership across the street. This project has been developed as, our property rather than we're proposing, has been a commercial property since the '70s. There is some evidence that some of the structures were built in 1950, 1964. So it has been commercial for a while. I'll go back to the site plan. Our building is 3,700 square feet. As I had mentioned, the restaurant in car wash is over 10,000 square feet. We're a 64% reduction in square footage. We think we're showing the building in a better location than the existing restaurant, which kind of is in the middle of the lot and takes up a big part of the lot. We're pushed more to the back, more usable area for our customers, again, as far away from the residential as we can with parking and gas. We pushed everything out towards Route 9 as we could. Right now, the car wash does face the rear of the property directly towards that residential area, the residences. I just want to reiterate, Stewart's has, you know, 335 convenience stores. We are employee and family-owned. Employees own almost 40%. We feel we have a good reputation in the town. We have three other stores in the town now. All of our stores throughout the company have neighbors. Many are residential. We feel that we work well between commercial and residential and working with our neighbors. We have thousands of neighbors. So we are well-versed on working with the public and with the neighbors. And also, we're a company that has a caring reputation. We're known to giving back to the community, both financially and with product. We treat each of our stores as its own business. So we try to not act as a large corporation, but 335 small companies, small businesses, all mixed together. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I do have Alec here to continue the presentation for the variance requirements.
Any members of the board have any questions at this point?
I do. What's the distance now from the tanks to the houses? What was it and what is it now?
The tanks were shown on the left side of the property, right here, very close to South Gate Drive. We physically moved them all the way across. I'd have to scale it, but at least 100 feet further than what they were.
Thank you.
Just to mention, this green line I'm showing here, that is the current setback line, the required setback. So as you can see, the canopy does fall within that. The building does not. It's the two corners of the building that require the setback variances.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Okay, can you just tell me, what's the size of the lot now?
Lot is 0.91 acres.
Okay.
So we also have our traffic engineer, Rich DeAndrea, on the line. So if the board would like, he can just briefly go over the traffic study that is office-prepared, because he's best to speak with that, because I'm sure traffic may be of a concern. Or if the board wants to keep moving, I can jump right into my presentation, where I'm going to go through the area variance balancing test and five factors as it applies to each variance that we are requesting.
Yeah. Why don't you go right into that test?
Okay, all right. So... So as this board is familiar, the statutory balancing test is whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the health, safety, and well-
You know what, I am going to interrupt you for just a moment. My expectation is that we're going to adjourn this to address the final, the new variance request. So unless you want to do that now, I'm suggesting perhaps you wait till the end, till the adjourned date, unless you have some reason for doing it now.
Well, we can present now, but if you just want to specifically talk about the new variance, we can, or we can defer, if that's what the board wants, until we're back.
Are you prepared to talk about the new variance request, or do you want to wait till an adjourned date?
I can probably do it all at once. Right?
Whichever you prefer.
Okay, yeah. So the new variance that we're being asked to seek is from the two-acre minimum lot area requirement. To support the variance, this project site has been developed as a commercial property, as Chad had mentioned, since at least 1970. And according to the Dutchess County Parcel Access Card, there were structures built there in 1958, 1964. The neighborhood, therefore, consists of, and relating to the first factor, consists of, and as historically considered the last 50-plus years, a mix of highway business uses, such as the uses that exist on site, and then the adjacent residential district. Actually, when you look at the 1970 historic aerial for the property, the house nearest to the site from the South Gate subdivision was not even constructed yet, and the car wash, restaurant use was clearly visible. So at that time, that structure would have been built, knowing that the commercial use existed. Further, this lot isn't too small either to account for the proposed gas station use. For one, Stewart's is reducing the intensity developed on site, going from two uses to one, and they're also reducing the building square footage on site by over 7,000 square feet. Further, there are several examples of gas stations being cited on smaller lots in the town, but two of the most relevant here are from the 2014 precedent, where this board granted similar variances to a proposed motor vehicle service facility, and the acreage on that site was 0.81 acres, where ours is 0.91. And the Sanoco to the south of Stewart's app is 0.55 acres, which of course is significantly smaller than what Stewart's lot is, is double the size. So any meaningful redevelopment of the site, giving this undersized lot area, which is pre-existing to the two-acre lot area requirement, requires one or more area variances. And this goes to a lot area, but also some of our other variances, like the front and rear setbacks. Stewart's believes they have minimized the variances to the greatest extent practical by the site design and the inclusion of design features to ensure the compatibility of use with the uses. And further, this site is well-suited for the proposed use, and Stewart's has no alternative but variance. And so should I just keep going, or do you want me to stop with just the one?
I think that's good for me. Does anybody have any questions about the, there's going to be a new variance request, because it's less than two acres.
Right, saw that.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. Larry, do you have any questions? Christine, do you have any questions?
No, I was wondering about the tanks and the pumps, how far they would be from the residential line, but we've already addressed that, so that's all.
Okay. And Tony, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay.
Paul, did you hear me before?
I did not. Did you have a question?
No. So my mute keeps on going on, but it's, okay. No, no questions.
Okay. All right.
Sorry about that.
We received a number of comments regarding this application. They'll all be made a part of the record. If anybody wants to speak who hasn't had opportunity to submit a written response or a written statement, or you want to supplement a written statement, please signal by raising your hand or some other method, and we'll go from there. I would ask that you limit any comments to three minutes.
All right. And Chad, if you could unshare your screen for the moment, so we can see everybody. Thank you. That'll be good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I would remind anybody, any of the, either applicants or members of the public that want to speak, will be sworn for their testimony.
Okay, so there's a couple of hands raised. There's an Allison Crawford.
Yes?
All right. Hi, Allison. If you could, go ahead, Christine, you want to swear?
Ms. Crawford, okay. Ms. Crawford, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. So what would you like to say?
Okay, first of all, the Stewart's representatives said that in front of the Stewart's shop, it was a six-lane highway. Unless I'm totally wrong, it's a four-lane highway at that point. So that's first point. South Gate, by putting a no-stop area, that will cause a very negative effect on people trying to get out of South Gate onto Route 9, as we know that that light is already bad. It's a very bad light, as it is. So sometimes only four or five cars can get out. So if you put a zone in there also, that will also cause further problems. I also don't see how, if there are cars sitting on South Gate waiting to turn left, how a tanker is going to go on to South Gate and turn into Stewart's, because it's narrow. How are they going to turn off of Route 9 if there is a car sitting right at the light? You explain that one. Second of all, my house, for Oriole Drive, is still less than 500 feet from the tanks. Even just by much of, if they say they've moved it about 100, and the corner house was 53, that's 153. Mine's about another 150, so I'm still 300. I'm still inside that zone. You mentioned historically that there's been commercial there. Fine. Put a Stewart's shop without gas tanks. Take the gas tank element out. Where else in the town of Poughkeepsie is there gas tanks within 500 of residential property? In Spackenkill as well? In Spackenkill? Would any of the board members be willing to have their homes in that area with a gas station? No need for a gas station. We don't need another gas station on Route 9. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Next is iPhone 323913. They have their hand raised.
Are you finished with your meet?
No.
There you go, yep. What's your name, please? Hello, iPhone 323913? No? We'll come back to you, maybe. How about Joseph Zondo?
Yeah, hello.
There we go. All right.
Mr. Zondo?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What would you like to say?
Well, I just wanted to say almost the same thing that the other resident just said. You know, I live on Gene Drive. I drive around the neighborhood. There's lots of signs on people's lawns. Probably like 150 people sent letters in, and I just want you guys to just listen to the neighbors, listen to the residents. Like, we live over here. We know how the traffic is, you know. It'll be a lot of pollution, you know, it'll just mess up the area and everything. And seven years ago, you know, it says that the gas stations have to be 500 feet from home. I don't know the exact, you know, footage, but she said she lives right there on Oriole, and it's not 500 feet. And, you know, why have a law if you guys, you know, if certain big businesses are not going to follow it? I've seen plenty of Stewart's that me and my son go to over there on 9D to get ice cream and stuff. That's a big lot. There's no gas over there. They could, you know, they could have a gas station over there. But we don't need another gas station. I don't even get gas from over here, so we don't even need it. I go all the way down to, over there to Wapins just to get gas. And we have two or three right in this area. We don't need another one. And then the lights will be bright and noise and machine. It's just crazy. We just, we just don't need it. This is just the wrong location for that. That's all. I'm, you know, but that's just me, and I'm pretty sure a lot of other people feel like that in this neighborhood. But that's it, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I get to the next person, I know somebody asked a question about how to raise their hand. If you're on a phone, you raise your hand by hitting star nine. And if you're on your computer, there's something on the bottom to do that, on the bottom of the screen. Eric is next with a raised hand. Eric? You don't show as muted, so hopefully you're there. No, all right. We'll come back to Eric then. Let's try a-
Hold on.
Oh, wait. Eric? Eric? Okay, so we'll hold off on Eric. I see that this iPhone 323913 still has their hand up and is active. You want to say anything? Yep, that's you. iPhone 323913. All right, we'll try again in a moment. Let's try, phone number ending in 808 has their hand up. Number, it's an 845 number ending in 808. You're muted, so if you can press star six to unmute yourself. Or maybe I can help. Let me see if I can help.
Okay, hello?
There we go.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Yeah. Hi, this is Ruth Little from South Gate.
Hi, Ruth, would you please, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
So what do you like, what do you want to say?
I just wanted to reiterate, the first two folks that spoke feel exactly the same way. Don't have anything against Stewart's. I do have an opinion against the gas station. Very much am I concerned about the trucks turning in onto South Gate, no matter where you put it up, if you lengthen the entrance, because it's going to have to get into the lane that's going out of South Gate. There is just no other way to get around it. It's a sharp right turn. The other issue is violating the 500-feet situation that was previously voted on and reducing it. I understand you added another 100 to it, but heaven forbid something happened with the gas line and it flowed into the folks that are living closest to it, or floated back. There's a school back there. It is quite a distance, I'll agree to that, but you just never know. And if anyone chose to rob Stewart's, and where would they flee? So those are some of my concerns. Man, I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next with a hand raised is Doreen Tiggnelli.
Hi, this is Doreen Tiggnelli. I'd like to say-
Hi, Doreen, Doreen, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so I was in attendance at several town board meetings in early 2012, when the law guarding service state was being discussed by the town board. And there were residents from various areas of the town who recounted their negative experiences living near a gas station. They talked about fumes, various noise issues that impacted their lives. And there was a lot of discussion by the board about how to best serve the public. And some board members and the town's prior director of municipal development helped whether the 500-foot buffer was even enough, that maybe it should be more than 500 feet. So in order to best serve the town residents, the zoning board should uphold the law that was passed by the town board. There was a lot of thoughtful discussion. And again, you know, residents do deserve some sort of quality of life, and this 500 feet would help them. So I'm against the granting of the variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Michael D. with a hand raised. You're muted, though.
Thank you. Christine?
Michael, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Folks, thanks for the opportunity to be able to talk on this too, just for my moment or two. I do agree with the previous people about the 500-foot variance, that's the biggest part of most people's concern. I just wanted to also produce in the question of, yes, Nassau School is behind there, and if you look at the overall map, the main direction of school buses out of there is through that gate access. And putting something on that corner impeaches traffic heavily for that gate and for getting in and out of there. We all hate to talk about school issues, that a murder happens there and someone has to get in and it's blocked from a tractor or something, or just another resident coming to the Stewart's store. So that was the point I just wanted to bring to this one. Again, thank you for this moment. Thanks for the time to have this discussion. Appreciate Stewart's coming here also. And I'm very much a person who goes to their-
Why can't I raise a hand?
Again, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Next with a raised hand is Stephen Krakauer.
Stefan Krakauer. So that was-
Stefan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
I was on the town board when the ordinance was put into place with restriction. And at that time, the board had discussed this at great length. And we had gone back and forth. And one of the issues that the board discussed was having the buffer actually larger. And a lot of the board members were in favor of 1,000 feet versus 500 feet because of the potential negative impact that something like this could have on our neighborhood. So this was put in place for projects like this. You know, the idea that the properties are on Route 9, we understand that. There's houses nearby, and you can say that there was an existing commercial use for a long period of time, but those people didn't buy houses next to a gas station. It's a completely different risk and a different impact that would have on those people who live there. So you can't just take a picture and say, there's already lights shining in on people's houses, so they've already been disrupted because that's where they live. It's not fair. These are the houses these people built or bought. These are where these people live. They spent a lot of money. It's their home. This use being brought to their home, I don't believe is appropriate. It is something that was contemplated when we passed this ordinance, back when we changed the law. And again, the issue wasn't shortening the distance for the variance. It was, the board had gone back and forth about talking about making a larger buffer. So 1,000 feet is what I would have liked to see happen at the time. My kids go to school in the Spacken- Um, my kids go to school, my kids go to school in this backfield district. Nassau buses come through that intersection all the time. Putting a gas station with tanker trucks coming in and out puts those kids at risk. The way out of our neighborhood, the main way, is that intersection of Route 9. If something were to happen to that intersection, that puts a whole bunch of people potentially at risk. The, moving the access point on Southgate Drive, there's nowhere you can move that access point to make it better. You're only gonna make it worse. That access point doesn't work the way it is, is set up now. It doesn't work if you move it up the hill a little bit. The traffic queues up there to begin with. If you take tanker trucks and bring them through that area, you are gonna make a, create a, a huge mess. People that sit at that light, most people who live in our neighborhood, will wait a few seconds before they pull out when the light turns green. Because inevitably, somebody runs that red light. You put tanker trucks crossing Route 9 into that makes you create a whole other risk for people, a bunch of other issues. I don't know how you're gonna get it off of Route 9 into that property, around to fill the tanks, and back out in any sort of safe and orderly manner. When the gas, when the, when the car wash was active, cars coming out of that car wash would always cause traffic issues with cars coming out of the neighborhood. The idea that the building is being small, is gonna be smaller than what...
Okay, your three minutes are up, if you wanna just conclude?
Okay. I, I just think it's a, it's a huge negative impact on the neighborhood around it. The benefit to the town, I don't see the benefit to the town in having to locate the Stewart's and the gas pumps there. And I don't think that this variance should be granted because you put the people of our neighborhood and the kids in our neighborhood at risk for no good reason. And you drastically change the, the character and the impact of the area. And I'm asking that the zoning board uphold the law that the town board put into place. Because we did a lot of, we've spent a lot of time and effort, and there's a rhyme and a reason to why we did that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next with their hand raised is, uh, Melissa Cole.
Yeah, hi, can, can you hear me now? This is Eric that you called earlier.
Oh, yeah, yes. Hi, Eric, how are you?
Yeah, I had to go run to my, grab my wife's, uh, my wife's laptop. But, uh, I'm on a attorney who represents the Sunoco...
Excuse me, Eric, Eric, what's your last name?
Cole, K-O-L-L-E.
Okay, Eric, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. But I, I would like to give other residents an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to raise my hand and get in line. I represent the Sunoco, the local Sunoco station on South Road. So if other residents want to speak, I'd ask if you'd let them speak first.
Okay.
Okay, um, the...
Marion is actually raising, raising her actual hand.
She's raising her physical hand. Okay, Marion, yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Marion Kozlowski.
Marion, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, although it's not testimony, yes, I do. It's actually asking questions, but yes, I do. Okay, I have been a resident of Southgate Drive for well over 40 years. And if you're talking historical property use, that used to be Sunny Ridge Farms. It wasn't even a restaurant back in the 1970s. It was Sunny Ridge Farm Market, which was a produce market along with the gas station. So, um, the traffic, as it became more and more popular, the traffic on Southgate has been horrendous. And I appreciate Stefan Krakauer's input about what thought process went into even, uh, making the decision about a 500-foot there, uh, 500-foot minimum requirement. And if that was the case just a few years ago, I don't know why this issue is even up for discussion at this point. In addition to that, there is a deli convenience store right next door. So I don't understand how putting in a Stewart's makes it any more important or special for the, the community when there is in existence for 40-plus years a convenience store right next door. And the fact that there's a gas station, I'm sorry, there is a gas station across Route 9 just south of the traffic light. So it's not like a gas station is necessary at Southgate Drive corner. And the acreage, if there's a requirement for a minimum of two acres and it's only .91, again, why is this even open for discussion? I, I just don't understand it. I have been living in this development since the mid-1970s. And I have no, I, I never, ever anticipated a gas station would be put on the corner a quarter mile away from my home. I think it's dangerous, and I, I am up in arms about it. And I'm glad that more and more of the residents in this development are beginning to learn about it. Because it was almost as if it was gonna happen without half the people who live here knowing about it whatsoever. So, that's it. I, I've had my say for this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, all right. Um, next with the raised hand anyways, we're gonna try this again, is iPhone 323913. I know we've heard sound from your phone a couple times. I'm gonna unmute you. No, all right, uh, we'll try again later, maybe. Alan Resnick has a hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, how many cars per day...
Alan, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
How many cars per day, uh, how many cars per day Stewart's projecting to go through their facility versus how many cars per day we're going through there when there's a restaurant and a car wash?
All right, so I'm just gonna point out that this is an opportunity for the public to make comments. It's not a question and answer period. The applicant makes his application. Uh, the variances that are on tonight deal with proximity to residential property. And then later on, they'll be, I'll answer about the entire size. Uh, the planning board is a more appropriate place for those questions to be answered. And in fact, I think there have been traffic studies that have that information. But if you wanna make any other comments, go ahead.
Uh, no, that's it for right now, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
At the moment, I don't have anyone other than Eric who has a raised hand.
All right, well, I guess I'll go then. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, I don't know what happened the other time. Uh, oh yeah, well, again, my name is Eric Cole. You need to swear me in again?
No, I think you're fine.
Thank you. All right, I'm from Cannon Bean. I represent Al Malk Inc. They're the owner of the Sunoco station at, uh, 2194 South Road. So Stewart's application must be denied because it suffers from several procedural and legal flaws. First, Stewart's is encouraging the ZBA to engage in legislation and completely ignore the zoning ordinance. As stated in the letter we submitted to the ZBA, the statute law has held, if the grant of a variance is destructive of the purpose to be achieved by the ordinance, there is a clear invasion of the legislative process. This is what Stewart seeks to achieve by locating a gas station on an undersized lot, less than 500 feet from residential properties. Twenty-seven years ago, the town board modified the zoning ordinance, adding more restrictions for the placement of gas stations in town. Stewart seeks to avoid complying with two significant requirements. The minimum two-acre requirement and the five-foot separation requirement. They assert the 500-foot separation requirement can be disregarded because this board granted a variance in 2014. This is clearly a substantial variance, 427 feet. In our opinion, it does not satisfy the variance variance criteria. And we addressed that in our letter. I trust the board will review this before you vote on any application. I want to address the applicant's argument that the board is bound to follow its prior decision from 2014 on the Malabar property. In listening to the applicant's argument, you should ju- listen to the applicant's argument, you should just rubber stamp their application. It's not that simple. And as your council will advise you, you have two important obligations. First, you must evaluate each application on a case-by-case basis. You gotta treat an Empire apple like all Empire apples. But you can treat a Granny Smith apple different from an Empire, Empire apple. In this case, Malabar is an Empire apple, and Stewart's is more like an orange. So while we acknowledge the presidential nature of the ZBA's prior decisions, it is not automatic that the same must be followed. Each application must be decided based on the unique set of facts before the board. The board must be careful that granting of such a substantial variance for a second time does not constitute the ZBA voiding the statute. The ZBA is empowered to grant relief, but cannot go so far as to eviscerate the legislation, the legislative intent of the town board. Stewart's is in fact encouraging the ZBA to override the town board's legislation, not due to any constraints on the property, but rather because Stewart's has chosen a parcel that's too small. On this ground alone...
Okay, if you could wrap it up?
...of residential property. On this ground alone, the application must be denied. If this variance is granted, the ZBA would have no basis to ever deny a similar application. Resulting in the complete abrogation of the 500-foot restriction, and residents throughout the entire town would be forced to question whether a gas station may open up next to their own home. The concern that granting such a variance will create a precedent for other applicants is made apparent... What's, what's that?
Your time is up, if you could just conclude?
Yeah, give me one second. The, the, the concern that granting such an, uh, well, look, I won't go through my whole letter now, but our letter really goes through and distinguishes the difference between the Malabar Realty application and the current application.
Okay.
I'll go into this more when the, uh, the adjourn date. But I'd like to introduce Nathaniel Parish, who's also, uh, represents, uh, Al Malk Industries, Al Malk Inc., rather. And he'd like to speak right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Parish?
You gotta unmute, Nate.
I'm sorry, what's that?
He's muted. Nate, you gotta unmute.
You gotta hit star six, uh, Mr. Parish.
We call him.
Star six, uh, when you're on a phone, will unmute you?
Well, I'm gonna give him a call right now.
Hello, uh, excuse me, I'm David Robinson. You said, um, 3813?
You had your hand up earlier, yeah, let's, let's...
Yeah, my Zoom said, yeah, Zoom said 3813, but my phone number is 9060, so I didn't know you were talking to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead. So, we'll swear you in, Christine.
What's your name?
David Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. I'm David Robinson, I live over at 12 Gene Drive. I'm a neighbor and I'm opposed to this project. I don't understand what's the rush for this Stewart. Why this site? It's only 73 feet from my home, where the town law states 500. This isn't a little variance. It is an 854% decrease in number of feet a gas station can be from a home when you go from 500 to 73 feet. It is an obnoxious size variance. Why can't Stewart go to a, another site like down Route 9, 2197 South Road? I believe is available and would eliminate so many of these variances, such as front-backyard variances. Should Stewart have to research an alternative location that won't harm the residents? The only benefit here is to Stewart's. I'm also concerned about the zoning board and Stewart's, uh, information that's not being shared with the public. The planning board made its agenda packet public on the website. There's no zoning board packet on the town website. The town notices say not to come to town hall. We must adjourn here until we all can come town hall to see the plans. When I click on a link to view the zoning meeting packet, packet, it's brought up a copy of a four-page agenda, not the full meeting packet. I noted there was a link at the end of a very long paragraph that said, "Click here for the meeting materials." When I did that, it brings up June zoning board meeting packet, and there aren't any material for the Stewart application. It's not fair that public can't see the same information. Why don't you make it public? I'm asking the zoning board to make information public and reschedule this meeting. It should be easier to get the meeting pack, meeting packet. Let's have a fair process. You don't want a public input, or you don't? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone with their hand raised at the moment. I did have somebody a moment ago who chatted that they wanted to speak. Their phone number was, ended in 9060, but I'm not seeing them on the list.
I have a question. Is it possible that you could, uh, unmute Mr. Warner? He seems to have a difficulty, he wants to speak.
Um, well, what's his phone number?
He's right about, I think I got it.
He's on the computer screen.
Oh, Mr. Warner, okay, all right, wait, wait, I do see it, okay.
Thank you.
Give me a moment.
Thank you so much.
I'm trying.
I think I'm unmuted now, am I?
There you go. Now, you're good now, you can talk now.
Mr. Warner, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Hello, the computer is for Warner, but I'm Nathaniel J. Parish. I've, uh, on July 9th, I submitted a letter to your board, uh, and I'm gonna briefly summarize it now, uh, given the time limits. Uh, my letter related to the fact that the particular request for the variance for the, from the 500-foot requirement is, uh, must be considered as a use variance. Uh, and that's very clear. New York State Law, Section 226-1, says, "A use variance shall mean the authorization by the zoning board of appeals for the use of land for a purpose which is otherwise not allowed or is prohibited by the applicable zoning regulations." Very, very clearly, this requirement is not allowed, this zone, this gas station is not allowed by the zoning regulations. And therefore, a use variance must be what is considered. Now, in my report, I cite a number of texts that discuss that very topic. Uh, McKinney's Consolidated Law of New York, uh, Section 267, uh, Note 35, very clear. It discusses the difference between an area and a use variance. An area variance permits deviation from strict compliance with zoning requirements for, as an example, the physical premises to be used. Uh, while a use variance proposes a change in the character of the premises and involves the utilization not permitted by the ordinance. I think that's quite clear. And then again, uh, I quote Raskov's Law of Zoning and Planning, uh, which is a classic text. And in Section 38, uh, Point 01, uh, they talk about the differences of use and area variances. And I'll just quote a part of the, of the, uh, discussion. The two types of variances which cases a customary concern are use variances and non-use variances. The latter, the latter, i.e. the area variance, consists mostly of variances of bulk restrictions, of area, high-density, setback, sideline requirements, and restrictions covering miscellaneous subjects. The, uh, the right to, to large or non-conforming use and so on. But a non-use variance, which is what we're talking about, a non, a, a use variance discusses the actual permitted use. And I think if you look at my letter carefully, uh, the discussions...
If you don't mind wrapping it up?
Very much, absolutely, and unquestionably indicate that a use variance is what must be considered. So what your board needs to do is to reject this particular, the application for the area variance for the 500-foot distinction, and to instead request that the applicant, if they so desire, permit, uh, you permit the applicant to submit a use variance application, which your board would then consider under the criteria of, you know, related to use... which your board would then consider under the criteria related to use variances. I also-
Sir, could you just wrap it up? Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a couple people that already spoke. There's a Michael now, which is new, I think. So, Michael?
I'm from Towne, Kansas City, correct? Can you guys hear me okay? Can you guys hear me okay?
Can you just speak directly into the microphone, Michael?
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Not bad.
Yes. Michael, would you state your whole name, please?
Michael Sapon, Towne, Kansas City resident and current town board member.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that a number of years ago, the town passed a resolution putting a 500-foot buffer zone in for gas stations. We did that, um...not, um... We did that because there were so many people that wanted us to put some kind of restriction on for safety purposes or what have you. I know there's a lot of work to be done with this issue. I would just like to say that I had a rationale as to why the town put that on. We put that on because we're close to each other a lot because we can go 100 feet to be correct for it. Yep, you have to go over 200 feet and thousands of feet, maybe up to 500 feet. So there was a reason for that, and I just wanted to know that that is a reason. So that's what the residents wanted at the time. And I think a lot of the residents agree that this should be there on basis. So just consider it correct because we want to be there.
Yeah, unfortunately, the sound quality wasn't that great there, Michael, so maybe we'll get your comments again next time or in writing. There are a couple more raised hands here. I believe this person was maybe the first person who spoke, Allison Crawford.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one, a couple of things after listening to a couple of people. The town set a 500 limit. I assume all the board members, you are all councilors, is that correct?
First of all, I couldn't understand your question. And again, I'm gonna remind you that this is not a question and answer period.
Okay, I just remind, say, asking if the... I just, I was trying to determine whether the board members are members of the actual town council or the town, you know, board.
No, it would be improper for ZBA members to be also part of the town.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That was fine. Anyway, first of all, I think under the circumstances, based on the fact that the town stated a 500-foot, that the board should uphold the town vote, that it should not be allowed. And second of all, because of the circumstances and because of the resident feeling on this project that this board, this zoning application, should be held adjourned until the members of the public can come to a meeting in person. Because the town, there's hardly no chance to see the documents. So the actual residents are not being given the opportunity. So I believe I'm asking that the town, that the board, adjourn this application until the residents have the right to see that unless Stewart's are going to be willing to send a copy of the documents to every resident on South Gate and Oriole Drive. Mr. Glad?
Hi, so this is Lisa Cobb. I'm the attorney for the zoning board. And I just want to, I was not aware that the materials were not on the website for tonight's meeting. Typically, every application is scanned and put on the website. So we will make sure that prior to the next meeting that this matter is on, all of the appropriate documentation is on the town's website, and everyone will have the ability to access it directly from the website, so.
I would also point out that if you review the planning board's meetings, there's an in-depth analysis of the project as well as, I think, answers to many of the questions that people had that actually we're not going to be able to answer. So that's something the public can review also. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, David Robinson. Spoke before.
Yep.
I forgot one little point here. Can I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, can we have Stewart state for the record how many stores they got without gas stations?
So once again, I'm gonna remind you that this is not a question and answer period. If you have some-
If the town board could let, um, get that information, let's state for the record how many gas stations they got without, how many stores they got without gas stations.
You know, I apologize.
For the record.
I'm at...well, I had a hard time understanding, hearing you.
Yeah, I said, I can't be done?
Now, now I can see you.
Yeah, I said, for state for, can we have the Stewart state for the record? Next meeting whenever, as soon as possible, how many stores they got? Or could the zoning board find out how many stores they got without, that don't have gas stations?
I don't know that that's relevant to our analysis, but I'm sure-
It's relevant because it would be a story without the gas station. Because the gas station is the problem.
Okay, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, and so there's-
There's more hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have Sayed Sakil. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong, but can you unmute? See if I can unmute for you.
This is Sayed Shakir. I live on 42 Gene Drive.
Sir, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
What would you like to say, sir?
I've been living in this area, in my house, for 15 years. All my kids went to Spackenkill and the same reason that other people have mentioned, for safety and the environment. I would oppose this gas station especially. I don't care about the Delhi, but the gas station is not appropriate for the place. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And do you see?
Yeah, Stephen Krakauer raised his hand.
Also, three from the top, two from, two from the left?
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, all right, well.
He has been there for a while.
Mister, so Stephen, if you could hold on one second.
Sure.
Gentleman with the sounds at the last name there? I'm gonna unmute you, see if that works.
Okay.
Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, what's your name, sir?
My name is Vishwa Chitkanth.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
What would you like to say, sir?
Okay, sir, thanks for the board for having this. Thanks for all the neighbors to come in and expressing their opinions. I do oppose the Stewart gas station. The one reason, one of my reasons is because we have a lot of foot traffic. Since I moved up here in 89, I lived on South Gate since 1989. A lot of foot traffic going up and down South Gate. With an increase of cars that's going to go to and from South Gate, up and down South Gate, there's gonna probably be an accident. Now, I've not heard of an accident or seen an accident, a car accident with a pedestrian on the South Gate, but I think it's going to be an increase. And especially at the light, which I still use that light to... I remember when there was a, uh...you can't turn on red at that light. I mean, that the obstructions of the corridor, the corridor, you know, fixtures that are there, they stopped it. So I just want, it's a safety issue with the gas tanks and the 500-feet ordinance and everything else. But we have to make sure that we keep the community in a safe place and think about the residents that are there and all the neighbors and the people that are gonna be around and how it's gonna affect when we increase the traffic flow. We already increased with the gym, when the gym was open and Dunkin' Donuts was open, we added more lights. And it's, now it seems like you can't go maybe a couple hundred feet without hitting a light on Route 9. And this is gonna even create a more congested area than we already is living with. And I just hope that everybody can understand where the neighbors are coming from, the residents are saying, and we oppose to the gas station. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Krakauer, you're up again?
Yeah, I had a, I just had a, first of all, a question is, there's no vote that's gonna be taken by the ZBA tonight, correct?
You know, could you speak a little louder?
There is no vote that will be taken by the ZBA tonight on any of these variance requests, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just kinda wanna reiterate. I represented the 5th Ward for 15 years and our town. And when this ordinance was put into place, this project was nowhere on the radar. So it's not a "not in my backyard" issue. This was not in anybody's backyard, as far as I was concerned. The issue came up in another part of town. The town board looked closely at this, spent a lot of time going through this ordinance. And again, my preference was a larger buffer, 1,000 feet, not 500 feet. And again, this wasn't, this, my issue with this project is similar to what I had concerns with the other side of town. And I always felt that we all have to look at what happens in our town and to the people that we, that we, our neighbors and our friends. There's a rhyme and a reason to the ordinance. The fact that there was a variance given previously to this, to this section of the ordinance doesn't mean that it should be given to everybody. You should not open the floodgates and take a decision was made on a completely different project and just continue to carry it over and over and over again. It doesn't fit here for a whole lot of different reasons. And it creates a very significant potential health and safety issue for people in the neighborhood and also all the Spackenkill kids. We have grade-level schools now, so all the kids from Spackenkill come through this neighborhood now. So there's kids, it impacts people throughout the town. So I would strongly urge the ZBA to look at this very closely and look at the impact for the entire town, for our neighborhood, the school kids, and then the next neighborhood that's gonna be faced with something like this coming through. And again, the intention of the town board, from my perspective, was to prevent a project like this from landing in somebody's backyard or front yard and putting them at risk. This does so much more than that because of the fact that we have an elementary school here in our neighborhood, and it puts kids from all over the town potentially at risk, people coming up and down Route 9. I also agree with the person who mentioned the idea that the Zoom meeting is less than a perfect platform to go through this. I think there's a benefit for somebody standing in front of you, looking you in your eyes and talking to you about the issues and being able to look at the plans and the documents. And while we have to do some of these Zoom meetings, Skype meetings, WebEx meetings to get some necessary business done, I'm not sure that we have to race to the finish line on this project and do it through a Zoom meeting. I do agree that we should all be able to walk into town hall. Town hall just reopened, I think, July 6th. We should all be able to walk into town hall and look at the documents, look at the plans, and speak to the ZBA board face to face. And I think, again, you should take your time in this process and do not negatively impact the neighborhood here and the town as a whole because we don't spend the time necessary to fully vet this project. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, the last hand I have up right at the moment is Eric again, who has spoke before.
I'll go quickly. I just wanted to piggyback on Mr. Krakauer's point that, you know, we should do our due diligence here, and there's no need to rush this application through. And I'm wondering, has the applicant presented, you know, feasible alternatives to the ZBA, such as, you know, an alternate lot that might be larger, further away from residential property? Wouldn't need all these drastic variances. You know, to the one residence comment, has the applicant, you know, shown any plans for just a convenience store without gas station pumps? Maybe less gas station pumps? I'm just saying, I think the due diligence should be done, and this shouldn't be rushed through. And I'm wondering if the applicant has done any of this? I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Star six to unmute yourself. I don't see anybody else right at the moment.
Okay, does the applicant wish to respond to any of the comments that you've heard?
I can, this is Chad from Stewart Shops. I can address, I know the tanker truck flow was mentioned a few times. I can show you a picture of what it looks like. If you want me to share the screen.
I don't know if you-
I can't.
Yeah, I don't know if we need you to share the screen again necessarily.
I won't. We can get into the next one if you prefer. The tanker truck does come from the north, enters the site via Route 9 entrance, and leaves via South Gate. That's the tanker truck flow.
Any members of the board have any other questions?
Right now? No question.
Do you want to hear the traffic study that the gentleman offered?
I have a question.
It's on the, um...
For next time?
It's on the planning board. There's a real, I'm not so sure it relates to us, to our variance, but it's on the planning board's website or their last meeting.
Larry's got a question.
Hello?
Larry, you have a question?
Yeah. How many deliveries of gasoline do you anticipate getting a week?
It goes by volume. This is Chad again from Stewart's. It goes by volume, so the more gas we sell, the more deliveries we have.
Well, you must have some idea of what kind of volume you're gonna have at the store before you put the plans in to get the store. So what do you approximate?
Once to twice a week. I mean, an average store sells 14,000 gallons a day. I'm sorry, a week, rather, 14,000 a week. And so, once a week is an easy guess, but it would be a guess, and it does go by the volume.
What time of day, what times of day do they deliver it?
We have not talked about any restrictions on delivery time, so they can come anytime.
Between what hours?
Could be, a delivery could be any time of the day or night.
3 o'clock in the morning?
It's possible some stores are only delivered at night. We haven't talked about any restrictions on deliveries on this site. So it could be 3 o'clock in the morning, yes.
And I think that, I recall from your testimony from the planning board, you expect all the deliveries to come from the north. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we have shown the trucks that flow to the planning board. They did ask to show trucks come from the south just to make sure they could get in. We did show that to them, but it expected that we, our deliveries are gonna come from the north.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Okay, then, at least it's appropriate not just to move for an adjournment till next month for the finalization of the next variance?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, then I-
August 10th.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Stewart's application until August 10th?
We'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is Mr. Sahithi, 8 Hinckley Place. Are you there?
Yes, sir.
You were sworn. Do you have anything else to add to your application?
No, sir.
Okay, do anyone from the public have any comments on 8 Hinckley Place? There are, have been a number of emails and written comments that will be made part of the file, part of the record. However, if there's anyone in the public which is a comment, you can do so now.
Yep, I have someone with a raised hand, the last three digits of the phone number are 876. If you can, star six to unmute.
My name is Janet Consiglio.
Had, were you sworn in last time?
The last meeting.
Last meeting?
I believe.
Why don't you tune her up?
Um, so what was proposed at the last meeting? Um, so what was proposed at the last meeting? Is that what is still being proposed tonight?
Right, the applicant has, has an application for a side yard variance, for the garage, and for a deck, and a rear, a rear lot line variance.
Correct, and I'm the neighbor that lives next door.
Right.
And what he had proposed last time is that he was going to move the garage, therefore it would only be eight inches from my property line in the back.
Right, that's his application.
And one and a half, and one and a half feet from the line in the front. Because as it shows, that building sits on my property quite a bit.
Right.
So he's still proposing it just to be eight inches from the back?
That's his application. However, we're going to have a discussion about it and determine how much of any, if any, variance he's entitled to.
Okay.
Unless the applicant wishes to withdraw the application and come to a different number at this time, otherwise we'll make a decision.
Hi, Bob. Hi, one. Like you spoke when we were there at the site, we met. I'm not sure if we need to withdraw those plans or whatnot, but just like you guys proposed that we have to, and if we could to go four feet from the property line.
Right, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir. As long as you guys are fine with it. I just want to get it done over with.
Okay.
There's more to it.
Right, there's the two feet in the back, and then there's, and then the one on the side.
And the water ran off. He was going to divert it.
Yeah, we'll put those conditions, okay. All right, is there any, anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on this application? All right, hearing nothing.
So what is, what is he asking for?
So I think the applicant would agree to a four-foot variance from the property line on the side of your, of where your property is. I think that's what he would agree to, based upon what affects you.
So having the garage four foot off my property line?
Four foot from the property line, correct.
Four foot from the property line?
Correct.
I mean, if that's structurally doable to him...
Once he's granted the variance, it's up, up to the applicant to make it work.
Right.
Mr. Chair, does that keep the rear, the front line variance at 1.5 feet? So it's adjusting only one variance to four feet?
So...
I just would like the record to be clear what the amended variance request is.
So the side lot for the garage, I think the applicant would agree to a four-foot variance from the property line.
Okay.
Which is what, the only really thing that he's changed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Any questions from the board, the board members? Hearing none, then I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, thanks very much. Next is number four. This is Foman Wash Car Wash. I understand that the ZBA's attorney has a conflict, and so the town board's attorney has been requested to step in. Is that, that's correct, Ms. Cobb?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, and then I, if, Jim, if you want to describe?
The situation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Jim Nelson. I'm a member of Van de Water and Van de Water. We're the attorneys for the town. Normally, Ms. Cobb represents the ZBA, but as the chair said, she needs to step aside. My firm does work for the town of La Grange, and Mr. Gary Baywright, who is one of the principals in the applicant, sits on the town board in the town of La Grange. At, at the present time, my work in the town of La Grange is, I guess I would, I would say it's sporadic. I don't have any open litigations, and I am not the partner who regularly represents the planning board, the zoning board, or the town board. But in an effort to be careful about this, I disclosed this situation to the planning board. I disclose it as well now to the zoning board, and in fact, had mentioned this to the chair in advance. So the question, leave it to the chair to ask the question, is, is whether the board is comfortable with me representing the zoning board in this matter.
So that's, that's the question. So does anyone, any member of the board have any problem with Mr. Nelson representing the ZBA in this matter, based upon everything he said?
I'm okay.
Okay. Phyllis?
Okay.
Christine, you're okay?
I'm okay.
Larry?
I'm okay.
Okay, Tony?
Yes, good with that.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that, in fact, there is no conflict for Van de Water and Van de Water through Mr. Nelson to represent the ZBA in this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks very much. Is the applicant for Foman, for Foman Wash here?
Thank you, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
Chairman and board members, I'm JD Singh with Mori Architects. Everybody can hear?
Mr. D Singh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, anyway, I'm joined here tonight by Jennifer Van Thiel of Cuddin' Fetter, Todd and Gary Baywright of Foman Wash. The applicants are here as well. And our proposed development is a new Foman Wash car wash at the site of the former Coyote Grill Restaurant on South Road. It's in the BH zoning district. Project will be a state-of-the-art car wash, including two separate car wash bays. One is the conventional conveyor soft cloth car wash that we use too, and the other is a touch-free car wash where the car is stationary and the car wash equipment moves around a car. And then this, this facility will also have a unique feature of a separate dog wash facility, which is attractive to residents who might bring their dogs and their cars for a wash, and also to pedestrians who can walk their pets to the dog wash facility. So we've been under review by the planning board for the past several months, and the planning board has concluded that the project will have no significant adverse environmental impacts. And we're here tonight on our application for a total of eight variances dealing with three main aspects of our project. First, a lot size variance to authorize the car wash and automotive washing facility. Second, three setback variances related to the location of accessory facilities for the car wash. One variance for parking spaces, which serve as vacuum stations for detailing cars after they go through the wash, and two variances for the refuse enclosure in the rear of the site, which requires both a side and rear yard setback. And then third, we need four sign variances, three requesting to break down the permitted wall sign area into four separate signs showing the separate services offered at the site, and then one additional to allow for a little bit additional sign area for our freestanding sign. So Mike, if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen to move forward here.
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
And I would just add that the county has responded that, with the exception of the request for 74-foot freestanding sign, that those other matters are of local concern, they do have some comments regarding the freestanding sign, though. Do you have, you have a copy of that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to present an overview of the project itself here tonight, including the setting, the site plan, and the architecture, and then I'll turn it over to Jennifer, who will discuss the specific issues we're asking your board to consider this evening related to the variances. And then Jennifer and I will both be available to respond to any questions after our presentation, as will Gary and Todd Baywright. So this side shows the setting for our project. Our project site, as I mentioned, is the former Coyote Grill on Route 9. Our parcel's located in the BH zoning district just south of the Marriott Courtyard. And the property immediately to the south, the former Howard Johnson's Motel, has recently completed approvals with this board and the planning board for redevelopment as a mixed-use commercial project. And then Gipsy Plaza and Hudson Plaza are also just south of our site. Also note that between our site and the Marriott Courtyard is a private road to River Crest Apartments, and those apartments are over 1,000 feet back from our project, and there's no view of the project from the apartments. We also verified there would be no view of our project from the Hudson River, and the planning board has found that our project's consistent with the town's local waterfront postal policies. Our plans were also forwarded to Locust Grove, and Ken Snodgrass, the executive director, responded that our project will not be an impact or visible to Locust Grove. So this is a bit more of a close-up zoom-in of the property. You can see the Marriott Courtyard to our north, River Crest Road Apartments access drive, and then the former motel to our site, which will soon be South Road crossings. And this site, or this slide also shows the configuration of the Foman Wash lot. It was created in 2003, actually, by subdivision from the motel property. And Jennifer will describe in a little more detail how the ZBA approved that site, or that lot size variance back in 2003. And then, just in this, while I'm showing this slide, I want to point out that there really isn't any feasible way to make the property any bigger. Again, we're bordered by the access road to River Crest Apartments, and then the South Road crossings parcel to our south and to our west. One final note on this slide, just beyond South Road crossings, is another automotive facility. It's a mobile gas station on a one-acre parcel in the neighborhood. So this is the existing Coyote Grill site, and it shows some of the problems presented by the existing conditions there. As you can see, the Coyote Grill building is real close to Route 9. There's very little landscape along Route 9, and there's virtually no landscaping on the north or the south boundaries of the property. And much of the parking on this, as you can see, was directed directly along and facing the north and the south boundaries. And then as we moved to our proposed site plan, we looked to resolve each of those issues that I mentioned and hopefully enhance the neighborhood compatibility of the site. We've increased the building setback from South Road substantially. In fact, the, the front of the new Foman Wash building is about in line with the rear of the existing Coyote Grill property, so that's how, our prior building, so that's how far we've moved back from where it is today. We've increased the landscaping buffer along South Road substantially, and we provide a landscaping buffer on the north and the south side of the property, especially on the north side there. You can see we've buffered this with some nice landscaping for the sidewalk that's along River Crest Road there. The rear of the property is green space, butts the land of South Road crossings, and that's the area that they're going to be using for stormwater, stormwater management, so there's no other neighbors directly to our rear. On this site plan, we achieved an overall reduction of hard service, services on the lot. Our proposed site plan actually has more green space or purbiest coverage than the Coyote Grill site plan. And you can see we're, we're continuing the sidewalk along South Road across the whole entire front end of our property, and we'll create a new pedestrian connection in from that South Road to the dog wash if, if folks come in from that, from that aspect. So site plan, the site plan shows that we have our three specific uses on the property and shows the relevant background as to why we are asking this board to grant a variance for our wall signage to be spread out across the building. As I mentioned, we have those three services, the dog wash, the touch-free car wash, and the tunnel soft cloth car wash. So customers, whether coming in by car or by foot, will be looking for some, some clarification of the services where they are in the building when they enter the site. The customers seeking to use the dog wash would come in and park on the northern side of the building and enter the dog wash, and then customers using the car wash would continue around back to see which car wash bay they would enter. After exiting the car wash bay, we've located the vacuum stations at the front and on the south side of the building where they'd be easily accessible. The front vacuums are intended for those who want to vacuum out their car quickly and then be on their way, and then the, the south side vacuums would be those who might want to spend a little bit more time detailing their car and giving it a little bit more attention. So here you can see our property, along with the South Road crossings project. You can see that the front landscaping for both projects and the parking arrangements are similar and cohesive, and the buildings are similar scale, which would really tie these two developments together visually. And then this also gives you context for a request for setback variances for the parking spaces along the southern side of the building, which are located here for the vacuums, and you can see the setback, required setback line is there, and then tucked in back over here is the refuse enclosure, again, with a setback line. And you can see the South Road crossings has a refuge enclosure right adjacent to our property line, and then they also have parking with their setback line in the same vicinity. So just blowing that up to show those setbacks, this is in a large view of the south side of the site, showing the vacuum stations along the building. The drive aisle along the south side has virtually really no other use except for those vacuums. The only time it would be used is potentially an employee leaving the site, or if a car didn't want to enter the car wash, it would continue around so it could exit the site. You can also see that these parking areas are far away from the perimeter of the property, and only a portion of the parking spaces are within the setback, and then that portion gets smaller as you get to the rear of the site. So these parking spaces here are a little bit more into the setback, whereas if you go further to the west or to the back of the property, it minimizes as you go along. And then you can see a blow up of our refuse enclosure and the South Road crossings refuse enclosure. It's an ideal location. It's, it's screened very well from River Crest Road and from Route 9, so it's really difficult to see. And then it is also very convenient for the refuse company to come in and empty the container, and they can continue right along and exit the site. And again, Jennifer, I'll touch on the details of the setback variances here in a minute. So here you can see a comparison of the property as it exists today and how the new Foman Wash improved the site by moving the building backwards or back from the road, increasing landscape buffer along Route 9, providing a uniform landscape buffer with South Road crossings, and then providing trees and landscape along the northern boundary, providing more attractive landscape buffer along the sidewalk through our Crest Apartments. And also by providing cleansing areas throughout the site that increase our amount of green space as compared to the existing conditions. So then turning to our architecture and our facades, here we see the overall view of the building. It features a Foman Wash themed colors of red, blue, and soft and gray. The architecture is similar to what we've designed for other locations, most recently the Foman Wash renovation project we completed in Wapentures Falls. We've incorporated varying roof lines and zine elements, showing these elevations, and it's a kind of a modern-themed building that'll coordinate nicely with South Road crossings. And you can see in this slide how we're proposing to use a permitted amount of wall signage, which is 100 square feet. We're not asking for an increase in the permitted area, only to spread it out so that the signage shows the location of each service in the building. We believe this looks attractive and will help arriving customers know where they should go when they enter the site. And again, Jennifer will touch on this here in a sec. This is the architectural front facade elevation, which helps to show the overall scale of the building, the signs and the related elements, and this shows a freestanding sign, which is certainly, I believe, an appropriate scale comparison to the building. From a design point of view, it's important that the freestanding sign be consistent with the scale of the building when, when it's possible. And then this slide shows an approach view to the site from a vehicle traveling south on Route 9. Shows the importance of the freestanding sign, as our site's obscured by that tree line here that's immediately to the north of our property. And then the building does not become visible right until almost you get past that tree line, and you're almost at the property. And there's a good deal of competition for view from the telephone poles, utility poles, and signage for the Hudson Row Apartments at the River Crest driveway. and signage for the Hudson Row Apartments at the River Crest driveway. So that's kind of an overview of our project tonight. And with that, I'll hand off the presentation to Jennifer, who will go into some further details on the individual variance applications. Jennifer?
Thank you very much. What I'm going to do is-
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do is just summarize each of the variances that we're requesting in terms of the five-part and balancing test that applies to area variances. First of all, we require a lot-size variance. Even though a variance was issued in two thousand and three to create the lot, the zoning law of the town of Poughkeepsie requires that car washes have a lot size of two acres. So we're requesting a variance to authorize a car wash on our lot of one point six-six acres. This slide shows that in the neighborhood where this property is located, there are actually two automotive facilities nearby. The one that Jay is marking now is the mobile station he pointed out before. That is on a parcel of zero point nine, one acres in size. And then just north of our property, on the opposite side of the street, is a facility that actually contains a car wash, and that parcel is only zero point six-two acres in size. We think that this shows that car washes are typical in the neighborhood. They're certainly not foreign to the neighborhood, and that the lot size that we're providing is very reasonable for the proposed use. In fact, if we move on to the next slide, Jay, I think the proof of the pudding that a car wash can be appropriately located on a one point six-six acre parcel is what we've actually done with this site plan. We have improved the conditions on the site dramatically in terms of landscaping, circulation, and even green space. So in summary, we believe that the proposed lot-size variance request meets all five of the, meets with all five standards and meets the balancing test. And as the chair had noticed, the county planning department had no objection to the influence of this variance and considered it a matter of local concern. So moving on to the next series of variances, these are the only variances relating to setbacks on the property. And as Jay has pointed out, all of them deal with the south property line and relations to the neighbor. These side setback and rear setback variances will not have any impact on the character of the neighborhood, in fact, will not even really be noticed by anyone other than the adjoining property owner, who has precisely the same conditions of his own property. I think one point that we would want to mention with respect to these variances is the applicant has minimized these variances to the maximum extent practicable. It actively moved the building northward to reduce these variances as much as they could possibly be reduced. And there is no other alternative other than a variance that would meet the applicant's needs. These variances along the side of the building for the long-term detailing stations, those stations would have to be eliminated if a variance is not granted, because there is not another suitable location on the property for those. And we think that they provide a very worthy service for customers. And with respect to the dumpster that requires both a side and a rear setback, there are alternate sites where a dumpster could be located on the property. In fact, looking at it here, there are a number of other locations, but none is ideal in the way this one is. This is the perfect location in terms of operations and as to suitability in the neighborhood. We see that the adjoining property owner has virtually the same condition applying to his property. So again, county planning has voiced no concerns, no county-level concerns about these variances either. So if we move on to the wall signage now, I think this is an important slide, because it shows the conditions that we think are very important, both as to the wall signage and as to the freestanding sign. As Jay noted, you don't see this site until you're just about upon it because of the woods and the vegetation that's around. And once you get to the point where you have to start thinking about entering the site, there's a lot going on here. A driver has to pay attention. There's the entry to the apartments. There's a large and multi-surface sign for the adjoining property in the rear. There's the telephone pole that's not going to go away when our lot is developed. And so the driver has to be very attentive coming to the site. And once he turns into the site, he's really going to appreciate the guidance that the wall signage that we're proposing to have is going to provide, because it's going to make very clear, oh, there's the dog wash, and so that's where I should go to park. He's going to see the confirmation that there's two different types of car wash being offered. So he knows as he's approaching the rear of the site that there are going to be two separate lanes for him to get in to get his car washed. So this variance we're requesting is really, we think the separate signs indicate the separate services that are being provided, and also help direct customers to where they want to go. And as this slide shows, the other reason we think the signage should be spread out is that it just looks an awful lot better. This is a compliance sign, but it's crowded, and it leaves the rest of the building without any signage at all. And I think in comparison, as Jay showed you, the elevation that we're proposing, again, we're not seeking any increase in the area for this sign. We're just asking that the signage be able to be spread out into four separate signs. And this requires actually three variances, because Lizette determined that each separate sign is a separate variance, and that's why we have three separate variances for these additional signs. So moving on to the next slide, the last variance that we're seeking has to do with the freestanding sign. And this is the only variance that the county planning department has opposed so vociferously that they will not even consent to the compromise or intermediate sign. So I'll explain this graphic, because it shows, as your law requires, that we show to you the sign we propose, which you'll see on the left of your screen. The sign on the far right of your screen that is permitted by code, and that is fifty square feet, and then a sign in between in the middle. But if you pay attention to the little dashed line squares that surround the signs, I think it's very important for the board to realize that the measurement of the sign that was applied, that is applied by the town, actually operates to seriously inflate the size of signs if the signs are irregularly shaped. So that you can see that this dotted line is quite a lot bigger than our actual sign area, but those are the rules as to how a sign needs to be measured. So, for example, if I just point to the, what's called the intermediate or the compromise sign, because your law requires us to give you a choice in between the compliant sign and the sign you want, we have to show you that that sign, the way that it's measured by your zoning code, is sixty-two square feet. But in actuality, that sign is fifty-two square feet, which is only two feet above the fifty-foot permissible signage. So why are we seeking a bigger sign? We're certainly not seeking a bigger sign just to have a bigger sign. There are unique factors that apply to this property, because it is only approachable from the north. And I think all of us know when we're coming south through the town, from the city of Poughkeepsie, we pass the rural cemetery, and then we start seeing the woods and the vegetated areas along the highway by Locust Grove, which you can see on your screen. As you proceed south, we see more vegetation in front of the large office building. Then we come across the Marriott Hotel. But then just south of that is more woods, so that the stranger approaching this site is not going to be put on any kind of notice that now is the time to get over in the right lane to be ready to enter a car wash. So as Jay said before, you just don't know that you're at this site until you're almost upon it. So when you approach, you see the same conditions that we described with respect to the wall signage. There's a lot going on. Particularly, we see the telephone pole here, the very large Hudson Row signage that occupies the visual field of a driver. So we are just asking for a modest increase in the signage to help the driver be able to see the facility. Now, if we, and we think that the county's position here has just ignored the unique circumstances that apply here because of the location. So if we go back now to this sign with the comparison sizes, first of all, to respond to the county's question, the base of these signs do not contain bubbles. An earlier version of this sign optimistically included clear sort of protuberances of bubbles, but when Lizette advised us that that would be considered a sign area if we did that, that the bubbles have been removed, and this is just plain front of a sign. Now, the county has two basic arguments against granting this freestanding sign variance. First of all, they say that the site has enough signage in the wall signs that there is no need for a larger freestanding sign. However, when the driver is looking for the freestanding sign, he's well north of the driveway and can't see any of the wall signs. So that argument really isn't persuasive. The signage, the only signage that the driver will see is this freestanding sign, and it needs to be big enough for him to see it and make sense of it to know to get over in the right-hand lane to enter the site. Secondly, the county actually agrees with our characterization that when one looks at these three different signs on this sheet, they're very similar in size. They're not, the difference in size isn't dramatically noticeable. And the county then says that there's an obligation to grant the minimum possible variance, which is no variance at all, and that's why they oppose a variance. But of course, that's not what the law says about the requirement to minimize. The requirement to minimize is to grant the minimum variance that will both satisfy the needs of the applicant to the extent that they're reasonable, and to protect the character of the neighborhood. So that here, we would respectfully submit to the zoning board that since the signs are so similar in their overall appearance, there is no effect on the neighborhood, and there's no reason to require minimization to forestall or mitigate any impact. So beyond that, we're aware that this board has great extensive experience over many years in evaluating signs, and we're sure that you will exercise your discretion prudently. And the owners have stated that they are willing, if the board deems it appropriate, to provide for the intermediate sign as opposed to the requested sign. The owners will not object if you believe it's appropriate, and keeping in mind that in actual measurement, that sign is only fifty-two square feet. But we do honestly believe that the sign that we've applied for, which measures at sixty-four, I'm sorry, measures at seventy-four square feet, but is actually only sixty-two square feet in size, is a sign that's justified and does not create any detriment to the community. So again, we will leave the decision on the freestanding sign to the board, recognizing that because of the position that the county has taken, the board requires a majority plus one vote to grant any variance at all, so there will have to be a broad consensus established to take any action. And at this point, Jay and I are happy to answer any questions that the board has, and I'm sure that Todd and Gary will be happy to answer any factual questions you may have. We thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, actually. You said that the intermediate sign was twelve square feet different than the smallest one, correct? Twelve square feet larger?
The-
Intermediate?
I think the difference in the measurement is twelve square feet-
Okay.
-between the two levels of signs. Is that correct, Jay?
Well, that's what it says proposed. I just want to be sure, because I thought you said it was less than that, but I'm just being sure. Are all of these signs, that one and the ones on the building, are they going to be illuminated at night? They have backlighting of some type or interior lighting?
Yes, Jay, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, all the signs will be illuminated.
The town code, I believe, says it, this is not a twenty-four-hour operation, correct?
That's correct. It'll be closed at night.
So can you meet the town code to turn these lights off at night after business hours? As most businesses do not do, but that's a requirement. Can you do that?
Well, we'll certainly meet any applicable requirements of operation of the signs. We were not told we needed any variance to have an internally illuminated sign. The sign-
No, no, it's just after hours that they should, right? After the door closes, essentially, I believe the lights are required to be turned off. But again, most businesses don't, some do, but I am trying very hard to get new businesses to adhere to that, because it just makes-
And we will adhere to what the law is.
Makes Route Nine look less like, you know, New Rochelle and those areas down below us. Okay. Will there be signs in the back of the building? I didn't go through the whole packet yet, but will you have the same directional signs, if you will, over the bays in the back of the building on the car wash stations, or is that somehow going to be imprinted on the roadway, so you know which bay to go to? Soft touch versus-
Jay, do you want to respond to that?
I'm losing it.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just to answer that question, yes, there will be some signage in the back of the building. There's going to be a self-service kiosk for both the touch-free and the soft car wash tunnel, so there will be a sign on that kiosk for motorists to see which car wash they want to use. And then we're also proposing that the pavement will have a colored striping on it to help guide the motorists to the appropriate wash that they'd like to use.
Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Oh, I have another question, I'm sorry.
You have to wait till the end. Christine? Larry?
No questions.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, my turn. Are you going to be connected to the new proposed facility south of you? South of you, where they're tearing down the Poughkeepsie Motel?
I think your question is whether there's a road connection between the two properties. The answer to that is yes. There is a connection that's been proposed, agreed upon for many years, and that connection is proposed on our site plan and is also shown on the South Road Crossings site plan that will allow travel between the two sites without need to re-access Route Nine to travel. So that's another positive planning measure that's been implemented by the two sites.
Thank you. Then we're done.
No other questions? Anyone from the public? How many comments regarding this application?
Again, if you're on the phone, you can use star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. And I'm looking to see if there's anybody who's interested at the moment. Not seeing anyone.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we close the public hearing on this application?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Christine, you're muted, so I didn't hear you. Christine, can you unmute your...
I do that.
No?
Aye.
Okay. All right, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
So that carried what, Mr. Chairman? What's it, what? That was, the vote on that was?
Six.
Six.
Six or...
Okay, next up is Mr. Karachi, 38 Channingville Road.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Karachi.
Ms. Karachi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Can you, I'm not sure that, we're not hearing you here. I don't know if you're hearing her on, Christine, are you hearing her?
I heard her from a distance, a little bit.
Yeah, can you...
Say again?
Can you speak up a little bit?
I'm so sorry, I have a poor connection.
That's better.
There we go. That's better.
Okay, so Gia Sinto and I are requesting an area variance for a fence we'd like to put in our backyard. We do live on a street corner, so our backyard is considered a front yard. The fence we would like is a six-foot, and we would like that for the safety and privacy of our young daughter who plays back there. We do have a lot of walking traffic because there's a, the Channingville Deli is across the street, so we just feel that a six-foot fence would give us the safety for her that we would like.
Any questions from any members of the board?
This is going to be this, essentially the same as the fence across the street from you, correct?
I'm, say that again?
You have, your neighbor across the street has a similar fence. Yours is going to be pretty much the same as theirs?
Yes, however, mine is going to be 14 feet from the street, so it actually will be further back
Further back, okay.
than theirs. But yes, essentially.
Okay, I'm good.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public have any comments on this application?
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
What's your name?
Uh, this is Anita Lewis.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't know the applicant, and I don't live near her, but I saw that this was coming up at the board, at this zoning board meeting tonight. And my only question or concern is that I too live on a corner, and the town did not allow me, in fact, they took me to court to, because I also live on a corner, they consider us to have a same front yard issue that, you know, I find to be, you know, a little bit extraordinary that, you know, because you live on a corner lot, you're considered to have two front lines. So I'm not against anybody having that, because I wanted it myself, and in fact, I built it myself, but we weren't allowed to keep that, because they said that that's a, a line of sight issue and all of these other things. So I'd just like to see some consistency across the, across the town where this is concerned, either it is or it isn't of, of, an issue with the town. It's either that you live on a corner, you have, you're going to enforce this against, across the board with all homeowners regardless, or just leave us alone and just let us have the six-foot fence. That's my only issue with this, with anybody, really. I think that she should be allowed to have it. I think I should be allowed to have it for the exact same reasons that she just cited. So that's the only thing that I would like to have on record, is that we need to have some consistency across the board with corner houses where this type of issue is concerned.
Okay, as you point out, corner, corner lots have two front yards, and fences greater than three and a half feet are prohibited under the zoning code, and that's why the applicant has asked for a variance. Okay.
I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that. But when I asked for a variance, when I believe it was the administrator, Lizette, was in office, she said, "Don't even bother, because it's not going to be granted." And so that's the reason why I'm bringing this up.
Okay.
She said, "Don't bother. You have, it's considered to have two front yards. It's our rule. That's what we go by. It's not going to happen." So that's the only reason why, like I said, I'm bringing it up, because I want to see this thing fair across the board with all people who have corner lots and who want this type, and who want this type of fence in their, in their lawn. And I don't see, I don't, like I said, I'm not against her wanting it or wanting a variance, because we all would like to have that. So maybe the zoning, whole zoning order on this needs to be changed across the board so that we all, everybody who owns a corner lot can enjoy this without even having to go through the zoning board in a meeting like this to have a variance.
Anybody else?
Again, star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone. And I'm not seeing anyone.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on number five.
I'll make that motion.
Then I'll second that.
Second?
Or Christine will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay, next up is number six, Patrice Knight at Division Street. Is there someone here for the applicant?
Ah, yes, this is Arthur Glenn, Hudson View Construction. I'm here with Patrice Knight.
Okay.
Mr. Glenn, do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
I don't know if any of you are familiar with New Hamburg Properties. Patrice bought a property in New Hamburg to construct a home on. It's probably one of the larger parcels in New Hamburg. New Hamburg is an old community, from late 1800s. There's a lot of non-conforming homes that are over property lines and don't meet setbacks or don't meet today's zoning to begin with. This property, which is a, encompasses 13,500 square foot of lot space, the septic system to meet the Board of Health codes consumes almost half of the lot. So the location of the home had to get moved up away from the septic to meet the required setbacks. We were hoping to have a house where the driveway would be on the right, the garage would be entered on that right side as well. Trying to reconfigure the house to still get two garages and try and meet what you would like to have, we changed them to the front, but even with that moving around and trying to meet the setbacks to the septic, we really need, we're asking for relief on the setback on the one side yard.
Okay, are you able to share your screen and show the schematic of the property and the proposed house?
Um, no, I'm afraid I can't.
Okay. All right, then does anyone have any questions?
I might, I might be able to get a picture, picture. That's not going to show the actual. You're looking for where it sits on the property.
I'm looking at the proposed plan, so I just wanted to know if you could share it so we could talk about it at the same time, but if you can't do that, I think you...
Hold, hold on one second, so we're going to try and bring something up to show you.
Lisa, do you happen to have this one electronically?
I will let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I should note for the record, there are a number of comments from neighbors that have submitted comments. Those will be made part of the record.
We're trying to bring it up on Dutchess County Parcel. Let me bring that up.
Well, that won't have your proposed building, but...
See, it might, it might give a good perspective to the board with the lots down here.
Okay, that, that'll probably be helpful.
Oh, I don't think doing it like that's going to work, though.
Oh, yeah, that's, that clears it right up.
No.
All right, so I'm looking at the architectural, at the surveyor's description, and the house is kind of irregularly shaped. So where I think the garage would be and the side, the east side, were you looking for the side, the yard, side lot variance?
Correct.
There's a little jog out at the end of the, what I think is the garage, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, what that is, is just a covering over a side door entrance, just a small roof.
Oh, okay.
If you're looking, you're looking from the front at that elevation?
That's what I'm looking at. So are there steps by that doorway?
No, the house is going to be a slab on grade.
Okay. Lisa?
I have not...
Under 213-J, are the, that roof, that overhang from a doorway, does that count against the side yard?
I will pull that up. I don't seem to have the, a copy of the, I mean, I probably do have it electronically, but not, I can't put my hands on it at the moment. I will keep looking. I thought that if the, there are certain things that don't, but I thought if it was a covered porch, it did, so I will check. Give me one second on that.
Well, 210-13-J, I think, is the section we need to check, but I, if you can get to it quicker than me, that would be...
So what exactly is it? It's just an overhang from the doorway?
It's just an overhang. It's not a covered porch. It's just, you know, just to keep the rain off your head where you're unlocking the side door to go in the garage.
There's a white, there's a white side out of the...
Okay, and the 15 feet, three inches from the septic system?
Right, that's, that's, that's where locating the house on the property, that's fine. We need that.
Why do you need that?
Well, that's what the Board of Health is requiring. It just seems extreme, but that's what they're requiring.
Okay.
Do you have something in writing from the Board of Health or an email that indicates that that's what they're requiring?
I can get that from Mark Day's office. He did the site work.
And what is on the north end of the property, that, that other square of the house? Do you know what I'm referring to? Where it goes to the septic, where it goes to the septic tank?
Are you looking at the plans on the house?
All I have is the, the one-page proposed plan. It just has, just has the lot and the proposed footprint of the house. Does somebody else have something?
Yeah, you're, you're talking about the square at the rear of the house going towards the septic field, Paul?
Yeah.
And Mr. Knight, you don't have a copy of this drawing that you can share with us?
I'm, I'm looking, what I believe, are you looking at the, the tank? I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
The tank is a very, is a very dim rectangle behind the house, but in the rear of the house, there's a, there's a rectangle just a little smaller, or almost a square, just a little smaller than the garage area. What is that? We're looking at the plan.
Right, so there is a, there's a plan that has the septic on the, you're looking at the house, it's on the left-hand side. It has all the fields. Behind that dotted drawing are the fields, and then there is, in the back, there is another second fallback to the septic behind the house.
Am I misunderstanding, Paul, or are you...
No, no, I want to know on the, on the plans for the, for the house.
For the house, right. There's a smaller square in the rear of the house. What is that?
Is it attached to the, how I'm looking at it, am I just...
Is that, is that something, is there possibly a fireplace in there also? Looks like...
No, no. Okay, so in the middle of the back of the house.
Yes.
Which is on the same line as the square of the bedroom, that's just a deck, but it doesn't go as far as the square of the house.
Yeah, it's set in a little bit. There is, it says covered patio, and there is a, there is a, the outside of the fireplace, the box of the fireplace for the living room, that's what you're...
Right, but it's only a fireplace that faces into the house. It doesn't face out.
Do you see, do you see the line going through the middle of the house that says To your drawings?
Yeah, from west, east to west.
Okay, okay, if you go north of that line, going towards the back of the house, there's another dark-lined square area with a small rectangle. What is that? Is that, is that part of the house? Is that a deck?
Yeah, I, I think what you're looking, I mean, I'm looking at the same thing. The back of the house is, on the left-hand side, is shallower on the very far left. It's almost equal distance in the middle to the right-hand side. The right-hand side is the structure. In between the, the left and the right is just a patio that is not built out as far as the right-hand side of the house.
Are you looking at where the three piers are for the patio?
Since you don't have it labeled, I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at.
All we have is just one page of a proposed plan that shows the, the plot. There's a diagonal of what would be the building envelope that would be allowed under the code, and then there's some darker drawings that show the garage, the side, the part that you talk about, the roof that's 9.2 feet from the sideline, side yard, lot line, and then it's the rest of the building that's 11.7. And then at the north end of the building, just south of where the $1,000 gallon, $1,000 gallon septic tank is, that, that line goes to a, to a square or a rectangle. Is that part of the house, or is that's a patio, or what is that? There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Can you see Ms. Cobb's?
Yeah, the square, well, yeah, the back, that's where...
Yeah, that's, that's a covered patio.
That's a covered patio? Oh, okay, all right.
Yes, that is part of...
That's outside, it's a covered patio.
All right.
And to answer your question before, Paul, the code treats any covering over steps as if it's an enclosed porch or an enclosed patio. So if it were just stairs there, it would not be counted, but because there's an overhang on it, it is counted toward part of the structure. And then in J2, which says any open or enclosed porch deck or carport shall be considered part of the building.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that fits that. Isn't this, wouldn't this be just more like an overhang? It's just a covering over the doorway.
No, there's no stair, he said.
Okay, well, then that's something that we would have to get a determination from the code enforcement officer about, not the code, the zoning administrator.
Okay.
But it appears from the, if that's where Lizette measured it from, it appears that she was counting that, and it may not have been clear on the plans to her whether it should have been counted, what it was, but I don't know.
Okay. Let me ask you this before I ask any other members if they have any other questions. If this were adjourned for a month for you to get that letter from the... If this were adjourned for a month for you to get that letter from the Department of Health and some clarification from the zoning administrator about whether you need the 9.2 or the 11.7, which is the proper setback, is that a problem for you?
I mean, we were hoping to start at least getting the septic in on this.
I don't think that there's any question that you're going to get approval of a variance. I just wanna know, I just wanna make it the smallest amount that we can grant. So I want it to be correct.
Alright.
Is that, is that, does that work for you?
If that's what the board would like, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so, do you have any questions?
We do have some members of the public who would like to speak on this.
I do. This is pretty vague to all of us, it looks like, as far as we want. We have in the past met at the site with the owner to try to get a more logical idea of what's going on in our minds. Is that something we might wanna do here, for everybody's sake, especially the builder? So we all agree, we know exactly, because that's a pretty tough lot.
Yeah.
Anybody that went up there knows that's a, it's hard to picture in your mind what they wanna do, as far as I'm concerned.
Are there, do you have house plans drawn up? Okay.
Yes.
Alright, I think we'd like to see those also.
Do you want a PDF of them, or you want a hard copy?
A PDF is fine with me.
Because it was something to give us more clarification of exactly what we're looking at. We didn't know what we were looking, took us all that time to determine what that rectangle in the back was, and that was a covered porch. We thought it was part of the house.
Understood.
Okay. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Tony, do you have any questions?
No others.
Larry?
I'm good.
Christine?
No, that's it. So do you think, will we be meeting over there so that we can get a better...
Well, let's see what comments the, the public may have, and then we'll see what we, what else we need to do. Okay, so if there's anyone else from the public that has, wants to make any comments on this application?
We do have a hand raised from Zoli. And they're currently muted, so, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. What's your, what's your name, please?
Shelley Zoli and Al Zoli.
Mr. and Mrs. Zoli, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
We do.
We do.
So, oh yeah, what would you like to say?
We're not clear as far as, as far as the variance goes. Is it on both sides of the property, is it on the west side, is it on the east side?
It's only on the east side.
Only on the east side?
Correct.
Okay, that was our main question.
Right, you had some concerns because of, of your property on the west side, right? Okay.
The other question, I don't know if this is something that you guys can answer or not. Do you know what the, the actual physical address of that property's going to be?
No, I don't know that.
Okay, because we've been getting notices and emails from Zillow saying that our property was recently sold. We are 15 Division Street, so we're trying to let people know that, no, we haven't sold our property.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, that's good, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I have some questions.
What's your name?
My name is Wanda McCarthy.
Ms. McCarthy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Right, so I'm one of the neighbors that sent in one of the emails to you.
Yes.
My dad owns 19 Division Street, so I'm gonna assume the empty lot is number 17. But the variance is obviously on his side of the house. Now, he's got, his septic tank sits on the west side of the house, and as you can see with the papers that are here and the plans, there's not much property in between. So I'd be really concerned about the structure integrity of his septic tank. Plus, he is also on well water. The well sits on the east side of our, of the house. But is there gonna be any sort of blast-in? I mean, if you guys are coming out to look at the property, I and I'm sure other neighbors would like to know so we could be there and, and talk about the same situations. But the fact that, like I said, it's his septic tank and the well water is, is real close to everything, I'd be concerned. Plus, the houses here are, you know, 150 years old or so. There's nothing but plaster walls, plaster ceilings. Fearful that big construction blast-in, anything like that would cause structural damage. And if so, how does that get resolved?
That's, if any damage caused by the, by the builder is the builder's responsibility, I don't know that that's a consideration that the ZBA is responsible for. And I'm not sure I understand your concern about the well water and the septic.
Well, I'm just concerned if the variances are really close and there, there's dig-in and it's approved, that if it causes any compromise to the systems he already has in place, you know, I, I'd like to know what, basically what recourse and what possibilities there are, because I need to make sure the house, you know, can be lived in.
Okay, Lisa, do you wanna address that?
So go ahead. The Department of Health will look at, they should have records of where all the septics are in the area. And that's one of the things that goes into the considerations of citing the new house. And as the applicant has testified, that's why the house is being proposed where it is. So the Department of Health is required to sign off on any of these applications, and they would be the ones that would look at the antiseptic interactions and prevent them from occurring.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, I mean, those are my concerns and with the email that I sent in, so that's, just wanna make sure and check on it so the house stays as it is.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, Terry Fetters, yep, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Hello, good afternoon, yes. I am also the adjoining neighbor living right beside Wanda and have similar concern.
Would you just state your name, I'm sorry?
My apologies, Terry Fetters.
Mr. Fetters, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. I understand that this variance board question is definitely confined to the variance at hand being the 9.2 feet, which is really, really small, but it's driven by the Board of Health issue on this rather large lot where it has to be essentially shoved on top of Wanda as the neighbor in order for the building to even be built. We acquired years ago about even purchasing the property, and we were told that it could not even be Board of Health approved. Obviously now it potentially can, but only with a variance. So I'm not trying to make you, or ask you to take on the Pining Board's considerations that they've made, but because of the decisions they've made that it can be built is forcing you to make a decision that's going to adversely affect us as neighbors. So I'm asking that it be considered that if you are coming out to the site, like Wanda, I'd like to be there. And currently, I completely oppose the building of this house.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I see one other person there who I know is trying to, yep, raise their hand, yes?
Yes.
Hi, what's your name, please?
My name is Beverly Taylor.
Ms. Taylor, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what would you like to say?
My, my husb, I Bruce Taylor and Beverly Taylor are owners of 19 Stone Street. So we will also be affected by the building of this house. Our concern was, like the Pining Board of Appeals, we have the understanding, the plan. And if you see the site, you'll understand why the neighbors are concerned. Because nine feet setback from Wanda's house puts it very close to her home. And we understand that that lot was unbuildable because of the septic, because basically it's sitting on rock. So the solution, as we understand it, was to put a very large retaining wall at the west side of that property, put a lot of fill in there, and put in a septic area there. And that's why the house was, had to be shifted to the east. So it's our concern that this house is not only difficult place to have it built, but it's out of proportion with the other homes in the area. You know, as Terry and Wanda mentioned, they're all old houses. They're small, they're, they're not very high. And when, again, when we're trying to read this plan, our understanding was that this house was, now, I could be wrong, 35 feet high, which is going to loom over everything else in the area. We did mail, and we've made several points in our letter. And of course, that was one of them, that how this house is out of proportion with the other homes in the area. And that there was the amount of fill that's going to have to be brought in for the septic system was also a concern of ours. And then the third concern was if there's going to be rock blasting or drilling, because we know it's just bedrock there. So how they're gonna sit this house down on all of that was our other concern. So if Board of Appeals would just please look at those things, because I said, it's, 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 I think if you go to the site, you'll see that it's not an easy place to build a house. And even when you look at the map, you can see that our other neighbor who's on the corner of Point Division Street, property line goes right in over Chad and his driveway, you know? And these houses have been here for a long time. So glad to hear that you're going to come and see the place, and I hope you do postpone your decision on this until somebody can come and take a look at it.
Well, I think the point, we've all been to the property. I think that the point that was made is we wanted a better understanding of the, of what the house is gonna look like. But, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay, did the applicant wanna make any comments regarding any of the public comments, respond to any of that?
Well, with regards to the blasting, I mean, part of the discussion we had when we were plotting this house was to avoid any of that. It just would be too cost, it would be cost prohibitive to do that. So that's part of the reason it's a slab on grade, we can't get a, we can't get a foundation in there. So, you know, we'll have to pin to the rock, because it is all rock here. With respect to the septic system, the way it was designed, and there is some concerns with the adjacent neighbor, because Patricia's property now runs pretty much into their driveway, you know? And she was willing and hopefully not going to have to, you know, interfere it there. And the way the septic is designed right now is to make a smooth grade with a planting on it, so it doesn't need an ugly retaining wall, which I know no one would like. But, you know, again, we can have further discussion about that. If anyone would like to meet at the site, I'd be glad to meet anyone there too. If anyone look at the plans or look at the, you know, what we have, we'd be glad to show them.
Okay. Alright, so then, unless any board member has any other questions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this to the August 10th meeting. I would ask the applicant produce a letter from the Board of Health indicating the restrictions on the septic system and...
And the PDF, or that you want the drawings, I'll send that.
Yep, that's correct, okay.
Not a problem.
Okay, then I, well, then I'll move that we adjourn this, item number six, to the August 10th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, then we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next is item seven, 14 Patricia Road. Jeanette Kilmeier. Is the applicant there?
I don't, if you're on a phone, you would use star six to unmute.
Alright, we'll come back to that one. Number eight is Robert Lewis, 12 Nassau Road.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, you want briefly to describe your application?
So I too am looking for a variance to put a fence up on my corner lot. It's gonna be, I'm going to be, I was looking to get one feet inside my property line, which puts it about 13 feet away from the road. I also said I can kinda work with it too, if I have to go 15 feet, 16 feet, something like that. You know, I have a, I have a two-year-old now who wants to run outside and play. His thing right now is he runs outside and runs straight to the road. So, don't wanna try to get hit by a car. And it's, I kinda live in like a fishbowl right now too, where people come in and out. I've, I've had people walk on my property. It's kinda like a shortcut, so they don't have to wrap all the way arounds. So, yeah, that's pretty much, I guess I just wanna try to get the variance for the six-foot privacy fence.
Okay, and so I'm clear that your house, the front of your house, is about 30 feet from the, from Nassau Road?
So, so that's the current one, is, since it's the corner lot, the, I was told that I had to be, I actually got two, I was told two different things. One was 30 feet from the side of the road, and the other one was 30 feet from my property line, which...
I just wanna know how far the fence is gonna be from Nassau Road?
It's, it's actually gonna be from Ricky, Ricky Lane, not Nassau.
It's, it's going to be some, some distance from Nassau Road, right?
From Nassau Road, it's gonna be, I, I'm not too sure with that exact measurement, because it's not going...
Well, it's gonna be the same, same distance that your house is from Nassau Road, right?
Yeah, it's just going right from my house is, it's gonna go straight down.
How far is that?
I haven't measured that, I'm assuming it's probably right around that 30-ish feet, since the house is there.
Okay.
And then it's just gonna go straight down to the, to the Ricky Lane one.
Okay. Art, you have any questions?
Is it gonna be right up to the front of the house, or are you gonna set it back a little bit?
I, I was gonna go to the front of the house. But it's not gonna go past the front of the house, so it's just gonna be parallel with the house.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Phyllis?
The space between the road and where the fence is, is that something that you're gonna continue to mow or put plantings in front of? Or how are you gonna manage?
Yeah, I'll still, I'll still mow it, I'll still take care of all that kinda stuff.
Thank you.
Christine?
Yeah, it, it looks a little bit vague on the drawing, but the fence is going to be on both sides of the house, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Alright, well, I wasn't sure if that line was erased or if it just didn't show up, okay.
Sorry, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, pretty much I'm closing in my, my entire backyard. So it's gonna go on the left side, right side. And then the neighbor behind me actually has a fence that I'm just gonna be kinda joining in with that one.
That's all, thank you.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
And so, do you know where your property line is, where the town's right-of-way goes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a ser, I had a survey done last month, so before, before actually going with the fence, I wanted to make sure I knew exactly where my property lines were. And from the road in is about, is, I think 11 feet, nine inches, is what the town owns.
Okay.
And then I was gonna go... And then I was going to go pretty much like a foot in, but like I said, if I have to go a couple more feet in, I can do that, too.
Okay, we're not going to be concerned with that. We're just going to be concerned with the coming out to Ricky. Okay.
Yes, it's going to be about, it's going to be like 13 feet from the, from that road.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to comment about this application?
If you're on a phone, you would use star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute.
I don't hear anything, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is number nine, Niles and Katrina Winters, Wintersen, I apologize, 16 Cathy Road. I understand, Ms. Capone, you'll be recusing yourself on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Is there someone there from that?
Yes. Hi, good evening. This is Niles and Katrina, Wintersen from 16 Cathy Road.
Mr. and Mrs. Wintersen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What do you want to do?
Okay, so we live in a square footage house of 2,976 feet. What we would like on our application, as is stated, to convert the already existing square footage and a separation by just closing up a doorway and interior wall to make an accessory apartment. We will be adding two exterior doors, one in the front and one in the back, and we are not changing any interior walls, and just adding a small kitchenette. So that, that is our application for a proposal, to see if we could be approved for that.
Okay. And you intend to leave the house?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, we'll live here, along with whoever else is living here. We have seven children and six grandbabies, so we're extending it out to family, of course.
Okay. Art, you have any questions?
No, we, we were lucky enough to get in. Looks like they probably let us in.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So it looks pretty good.
Christine?
No questions.
Tony?
The B team made it in. Oh, no, no questions.
All right, Larry?
Yeah.
Larry, did you have anything?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any comments about this application?
Star nine to raise your hand, or star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
Okay, hearing, no comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So that's one recusal and five in favor. Okay. Next is number 10, Craig Shannon, 47 Kingwood Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, John McKee here.
John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What do you want to do?
I'll give my picture on the screen. I can't get on there.
It happened to us at all, so...
All right, we're good. All right, so I want to do an addition on the garage. It's a second-floor addition. It's a theater room and a workout room. And the variance I'm asking for is a height variance, because the garage structure is taller than the house.
Okay.
That's it.
And what about the carport?
There must have been a mix-up, because originally the carport was on the first variant, or first application, and the zoning lady was supposed to take that off. I had given her a new submittal of variances that did not include the carport, because we had a disagreement about the setback, and I, we're waiting for a survey. So we're not going to do the carport right now, it's strictly just the addition over the existing garage. So I, I gave a full set of drawings with the carport not on it, to, there were however many copies, 14 copies, whatever it was, and I, I don't know what happened. I did submit everything that they asked for. There I am. And anyway, somehow they did not get to you, but the carport is not part of this variance.
Okay.
Lisa, what did we, do you have the, the public hearing notice?
I'm sorry?
No, I'm asking Lisa Cobb, our attorney, if the public hearing noticed, what did, what did we notice the hearing for?
I don't think there were any height variances on the...
Yeah, I don't remember one either.
Right, because the, the agenda covers the setbacks, and I'm pretty sure that that's what the height, what the legal notice covered as well.
So my, my recollection is that this is attached, an attached garage. I thought that height requirement was only for detached.
I explained that to the zoning administrator, and she said, doesn't matter, she wants a height variance. So she asked me for the height of the house and the height of the structure. I gave that to her, and then my carport, I gave her the setbacks for that were 17 feet, and she said that they were 12 feet, which the only way to prove it is to get a survey. So I said, take off the carport, and she said, you still have to get a variance for a height variance. My architect had told me that they were attached and it didn't need to have a height variance, but the zoning lady said that it's not true.
So what it may be, if I can jump in, if your car, if, if your house is closer to this line now, and you're just going up, how tall is your addition going to be? Are you less than 35 feet?
Yes, 25 feet total height.
So it's not really a height variance, but you need the variance because you are increasing the height of the structure where the setback is too close to the property line already. So your house doesn't currently meet the side yard setback. It requires 20 feet, and you have 11.7 feet, and because you're going taller, that's why you need this variance. So it's not actually a variance for the height of the garage, but it's a variance because you're already too close and you're going taller. So it's kind of semantics, but that's, so back to Paul, I believe that the legal notice is proper as to the garage, because if the garage is only 25 feet tall when we're done, it's 35 in that zone.
All right, so then, in that case, if, do you want to wait? Are you still intending to do the carport?
I was going to... Oh, sorry.
We can do them separately from our plan. If the applicant is, you know, wants to withdraw and reapply for that zoning board, or we can, you know, deem that one adjourned, since we did notice for the, but we don't know what the measurement's going to be ultimately, so we may have to renotice for the carport in any event.
Okay.
So am I allowed to get a variance for just the addition and not the carport?
Yes. And so your garage is not going any closer to the property line than the existing house, right? You're just going straight up?
Right, same footprint, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
Did you call me?
Yeah. You have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay.
So, Mr. McKee, when do you think you'll get the survey? Is this something where you would prefer that the board adjourn the carport to the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll get the survey before that, yeah.
Well, is the survey where the actual property line is? Is that...
Yeah.
Are you comfortable getting a variance if you, for the garage, if you don't know where the property line is?
I mean, I want to start this project. I didn't think I had to get a variance from the get-go. I originally wasn't putting a carport on. I just wanted to, my original application was for the second-floor addition, assuming I didn't have to get a variance. So I'm, as it stands now, I'm, you know, I'm behind, and I'm holding up, you know, a slot in my schedule to do this job. So, I mean, if I could get a variance to do the garage, the carport, I couldn't care less if it takes a month or two to get that, you know, together. But the, the actual addition, I want to, I want to get rolling on as quickly as I can.
All right, all right. You're comfortable with that, that you're 11.7 feet from the property line?
I think I'm 17, but, you know, if you want to call it 11, we'll call it 11 for now until I get my survey.
And, Mr. Chair, one of, I mean, you could just, as part of the, of any approval that the board might want to grant, simply say that it can't go any closer than the existing house, and then whatever the dimensions are, that it won't be any greater than, it won't be any less than 11.7, as the applicant testified.
Okay, that's fine with me. And I'm sorry, was there anyone from the public that wanted to comment on this application?
Yes, I just had a question. Hi, John McKee.
Kathy.
What's your name? Kathy Satara.
Kathy, Ms. Satara, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do swear.
Okay.
Yes. So, John, there, there's not going to be any effect on the right side of the property as you're facing it? This is all happening on the north side?
Yeah, this is just over the garage. Not, nowhere's near your property.
Okay. Just checking, because I have a for sale sign up.
Yeah, no, it's going to improve the value of your property immensely.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, he's got landscaping and the generators on my side, so that's why the plans weren't available online before the, for this meeting, so...
Yeah, this is strictly over the garage, which is on the opposite side of the, your, your property.
Where we already got a patio on top.
Yes, yeah, we're taking that off.
Taking that off. Okay, cool. Good to see y'all. Thank you very much.
Nice talking, Kathy.
So Lisa, is it easier to have him withdraw his carport application?
That's kind of an administrative thing. I think what, in order to potentially not have to renotice, what we may want to do is adjourn the portion of the meeting that deals with the carport, and if it comes in next month, we can do that, and if not, we can have the applicant withdraw it and reapply. But I would hate to have to get into the whole, you know, whether it's a different application and more application fees are required or any of that. So you can close the public hearing as to only the garage. We've opened and adjourned the public hearing as to the carport, and we can see what happens if there's a submittal between now and August.
Okay. In that case, then I would move to close the public hearing regarding the addition over the garage, but adjourn the carport application.
I'll second that.
Second.
B team.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number 11, Daniel Dyer, Stephanie Lane.
How are you guys? It's Daniel Dewire, 23 Stephanie Lane.
Mr. Dewire, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Why don't you describe what you want to do?
I'm looking to do a, a side extension off my existing porch that I have in the backyard. Currently, my deck is like 20 by 20. I'm looking to make a deck next to it that's 12 by 12 with a covering over it for, to provide shade. So I think, I believe it's going to be about 16 feet off the property line. I know, I believe the setback's 20s. I'm looking for a four-foot variance to achieve this.
Okay. Tony, is it detached from the existing deck?
Yes.
Lisa, are detached decks treated differently? And you're mumbling, or you're muted?
She's muted.
It looks attached, huh?
He says, he says, on the next page, it says, "Not attached."
Lisa, you're muted.
So if it's not attached, then it goes under 21048, which is an accessory structure, which requires it not to be within 10 feet of a property line, and therefore it doesn't seem that a variance would be required. But obviously, there was some reason that the zoning administrator thought it was connected or attached.
Well, one of the drawings looks like it's attached, but then another drawing says it's not attached, so...
Yeah, that's why my contractor was a little confused that we even needed a variance, because he thought it was an accessory structure, to be honest with you guys. Yeah, it's going to be, you know, just next to the deck, the existing deck, it's not going to be attached to it.
How are you going to get from one deck to the next?
Well, it's just going to butt up to it, in other words. You know what I mean?
No, no, I don't know what you mean. It's either attached or it's not attached.
I guess we could call it attached, then.
Well, you chose poorly.
Right, yeah, I guess I'm mistaken. It's attached.
Okay, so it is attached.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at the drawings now. I'm, I'm sorry, I, it is attached.
Okay. All right, and along that, that property line, there's a lot of vegetation. Is that yours or your neighbor's?
Yes, that is mine.
Okay.
That's mine.
You intend on keeping that?
Yes, me and my neighbor both like the vegetation, provides privacy.
Okay. All right. All right, do you have any questions?
No questions. Once we figure it out it's attached, we're okay.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this application?
Star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
You know, I do have a question. How, how tall is the covering going to be relation, in relationship to the existing deck?
In relation to the, well, the existing deck doesn't have a covering on it.
Well, all right. Are they going to be the same level?
Yes, yes. So the decks will be the same level, and then they'll just have a roof over it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Then I, I move to close the public hearing.
Second left.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's carried. Next is number 12.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Prudence Barton, 2 Water Street. Is there anyone for this application?
Yeah, I'm Steve Wellin of Wellin Architecture. I'm representing the owners.
Okay.
Mr. Wellin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. What do you want to do?
So we're looking to do a single-story addition on the south side of the property. It's approximately 184 square feet. It's to expand their existing kitchen and dining area. It's, we are looking for a variance for approximately 5 and 1/2 feet, and that's only because the existing house already is beyond, excuse me, is beyond the rear yard setback.
And where exactly on the property is this going to go?
It's... And I, if I can share my screen, I can walk you through the drawings.
Sure, that'd be good. All right.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this here, zoom in a little bit. So here's the existing site plan.
Right.
There's the house as it sits right now, and you can see, and it's on a corner lot. So we have two front yards, we have one side, and this is the rear yard here. And this is the extent of the existing house right now. You can see it's already over the rear yard setback.
Right.
And if I go over here to the proposed, that shaded area, that's our proposed 184 square feet addition. And that, too, is also beyond the rear yard setback. Now, we're proposing not to go any further into the rear yard. We're going to align it with the existing edge of this section of the house right here. There is a slight jog in the house, and that's only because there's a change in materials. It goes from, on the north side, it's brick, and then on the southern, southern side, it changes over to siding. We're going to align with that flush right there. Okay, if I go to... And this is the plan. This line right here, that's the former, that's where it is as it sits right now. And that's an elevation of what we want to do. And we're really, we're just bringing out pretty much what's already there now. You can see, here's a, there's an actual photograph of that side of the house. So we're looking to extend this out beyond this brick wall right here.
Ah.
There, you can see, there's the change in materials right there.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to align with this space right here.
Okay. All right, all right, you have any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Uh, anyone from the public want to comment on this application?
If you wouldn't mind, uh, I'm sharing your screen, so we can also see.
Nope.
And again, star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
Um, I don't see anyone, so, um, unless anyone else has any questions, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next are items 13 through 16. Eastdale Village. Is it the same applicant for all these, or are they separate?
Same applicant.
Same applicant, okay.
Good evening.
What's your name?
Jeff Kane.
Mr. Kane, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, I'm sorry, before you begin, there's, I think, notices from the county. All these are matters of local concern?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Uh, again, Jeff Kane, representing both Mid Hudson, uh, Town Center Development and, uh, Eastdale Village. Uh, I'd like to share my screen if I could and walk through the, uh, the variances.
Fine.
Um, so we'll start with the, uh, with the monument signs. And, um, actually, I guess I'm not sure in which order they were, uh, they were on the agenda. Um, but I was going to walk through the one on the, actually, I'm walking through both of them together. But really, for the, for the monument signs, um, Eastdale, as you, as you may know, is located on both sides of, of Route 44. Um, the 2008 town plan designated this area for a new town center. So Eastdale Village really has become the new town center, uh, built to meet the town plan and zoning code. Uh, it's been 12 years, it's been a long 12 years since that 2008 town plan. And, uh, we're trying very hard to create this place with an active Main Street, accessible retail tenants, and a rental community that's integrated into the retail setting. So part of that, um, um, part of that design, uh, is, uh, a walkable pedestrian-oriented center, human-scale buildings, attractive architecture, and the look and feel of a northeastern town center. So the zoning code does a good, uh, does a good, um, uh, job of, of matching this intent. But some of the signage requirements haven't matched up with the needs of both the, the tenants in some places, the, uh, the, uh, the owners within Eastdale. So this application is requesting freestanding, freestanding signs to establish the name of the center. We want you to know when you've arrived at, at Eastdale. So a lot of the work that we've done with the, uh, if you've seen the lighting, the landscaping along 44, this, uh, this, these signs that we're looking for are one more piece of the, uh, of, of our scape and landscaping, uh, puzzle there. Um, they really do reinforce that, uh, that sense of place. And because Eastdale is on both sides of 44, we're looking for one lot on, uh, on each side, I'm sorry, one sign on, on each side. They are on separate lots. Um, we tend to view the, uh, the project as a whole, but understanding that, uh, the, the, the two signs are on, on, on separate lots. So just kind of a broad overview of, uh, of, of Eastdale. And, um, you can see 44 runs right down the middle of, uh, your screen here, the, uh, the west side or, or north side, depending on, uh, how you want to, uh, look at the, uh, the north arrow. Um, you know, the residential area in the back corner here, our Main Street, which bisects, um, uh, Route, Route 44, and that's where the, the commercial tenants are. Uh, we were, um, uh, before you, previously, for variance for the, the medical office building at the end of Eastdale Avenue. Um, so now we're looking at the, uh, at these monument signs on, uh, on 44. One, uh, that you'd see heading towards Poughkeepsie, and one at this end that you'd see, uh, if you're Pleasant Valley now. The reality is, the code doesn't include a provision for monument signs for the town center. And so these signs that we're looking for, kind of outside the standard language of the code, these are not to advertise any, any user. And again, they're very simple, uh, signs, uh, looking only to establish that, that sense of place. Um, on the, the north side, the west side, uh, of 44, looking for a 21-square-foot freestanding sign, uh, 12 square feet is allowed. And here's the, uh, here's the drawing of that, uh, of that sign. Um, uh, freestanding signs are measured for the entire face, not just the, uh, not just the lettering. Uh, so this entire white box is how the, uh, how the, the measurements are for freestanding, uh, freestanding sign. Again, we think it's a very, uh, very, very modest sign, 21 square feet. I've been listening to you tonight talk about hundreds of square feet on signs. Um, so again, we think this is a very, uh, very modest approach, uh, to the, uh, to the, to the signage. And we think in keeping with what we're trying to create with an Eastdale. I, I guess the, uh, the other thing that, um, uh, is, is important to note is that these are single-faced signs. We're not looking for double face at each end. These are, they're angled towards the incoming traffic, so there's really only one face of each sign, uh, that you'd be seeing. So you, again, you know when you've arrived in, uh, in Eastdale. Um, uh, nine-inch-high letters, uh, they're lit from behind, brick-based landscaping below the, uh, below the, the, the sign itself. There will be some, uh, again, brown mounted lighting, uh, of the, uh, of the, of the sign. Um, and, uh, again, you can, you can see the details on the, uh, here on the, on the chart. So, uh, you have the five questions that you have to, uh, have to address. Um, and, and just to run through them quickly, uh, one is, you know, will there be undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? And, uh, we, we, uh, know this is a mixed-use residential, um, uh, center. It's a commercial town center, and the monument sign is part of the integrated signage plan to establish the town center. Um, as part of the planning board approval, we were required to submit an overall plan for signage. Uh, and, uh, that, that plan was, was later reviewed and accepted by the, by the planning board. And this, uh, these signs, both monument signs, are, uh, consistent, uh, not only with that overall signage plan, but also with the site plans that were, uh, that were viewed and been approved by the, uh, by the, uh, by the planning board. And the potential seeker impacts of the signs have been, uh, reviewed, uh, as part of the coordinated seeker review. Again, this was, uh, uh, an EIS was prepared for this project. The zoning board was an involved agency, uh, in that process. And so that really the seeker review, uh, we believe has been, already been, uh, completed, uh, for, for these signs. Uh, can the benefit be achieved without an area variance? Uh, no, we, we really can't, um, uh, get these signs without a, yeah, without an area variance. A 12-square-foot sign just, uh, just doesn't work, uh, for the, uh, for what we're trying to create here. The nine-inch-high, uh, letters, we needed to ensure legibility and to make sure the sign face balances the, uh, the text. Um, we did have a, a confirm, conforming 12-square-foot sign. So again, the, the, the 12-square feet is the entire white face. So we had to shrink the lettering. Uh, these are seven-inch letters. Um, it, it really is not balanced, in our opinion. And, uh, to, to get that balance of the Eastdale and the white background, we got to do even smaller lettering. It, uh, so while this meets the code, it doesn't meet what, uh, what the applicant needs in terms of, uh, in terms of establishing, uh, the presence of Eastdale with, uh, with, with the signage. Third question is, are the variances substantial? Um, and again, we, 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 uh, believe that they are not substantial. Uh, 12 square feet is allowed. We're asking for 21s and nine-square-foot variance. And it really is the minimum, uh, that's needed to, to convey the, to convey the message and meet the needs of the, uh, of the applicant. Um, will it have an adverse impact, uh, affect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? Uh, again, uh, no. Uh, this is only for the town center. And I think this is important in looking at, uh, the potential for other precedents that, uh, that the board might set here. This is not advertising that use, or user on the site is monument signs, just only to create awareness that you're in the, the town center, that you're within, uh, within Eastdale. And is the hardship, uh, self-created? And then, again, we, we believe it's not self-created. It's, uh, really a function of the zoning code. Uh, didn't really address the potential for a town center having signage defining the, defining the space itself. Again, it was, uh, we believe, an oversight and involvement of the code. Uh, and, uh, I believe this will help kind of plug that hole. Um, so I'm, um, happy to answer questions about the, the, the sign that's, uh, again, I, I believe was, we were talking about the one on the, uh, on the west side. We also have one on the east side. Um, I can, you know, it's pretty much the, the same thing. I don't know how you would like to proceed on this, uh, on this hearing.
All right. Anyone have any questions regarding the monument sign? All right?
I'm a little confused. You're going to put a sign up on both sides of Route, uh, Route 44, correct?
One side on each side, yes.
And how are they going to be angled, if you're coming from Poughkeepsie, heading out toward Pleasant Valley? Right? Where will the signs, what's your angle? Because wouldn't you need one of both ends of both sites?
Well, let me, uh, I'll, I'll let me share the screen again. I'll go back to the, uh... So, heading to, uh, to Pleasant Valley, right?
Yeah.
So you're driving up the, uh, 44 here.
Yes.
The sign will be angled here in the corner, so that you would see the face on the right, on your right.
Yep.
As you're, uh, as you're approaching the new traffic signal of Eastdale Avenue. And, uh, heading from Pleasant Valley to Poughkeepsie, again, it'll be here, angled on your right as you're, as you're heading down, uh, 44. So you'd see the sign, the face of the sign only on that side.
So the guess is that people are going to be sharp enough to understand that it's on both sides of the road. You don't need one from each direction on both sides.
Don't need one from each direction on both sides, because we want you to know when you got there, not when you left.
Okay, well, if you're coming from the other direction, you know, if you're looking at, never mind. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Phyllis?
No, I have the same question. Our hash.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Um, anyone from the public want to comment on this application, this part of the application? All right, you want to go on to the next, um, applications?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, the, um, um, the application for the, um, uh, sign on the other side is really a, um, uh, the, the, the same application.
Oh, no. Now, I'm good, we're good with this. If you want to go on to the next sign application.
Right, so I would just ask that, uh, that for the record, that, uh, that, the, uh, the information submitted and, and, uh, and my testimony be repeated for the, uh, the second sign, the one on the, uh, on the, on the east side as well.
Okay. Not going to change it?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, let me, um... Make sure I got the, okay, so, um... So the, um, now we have these, um, uh, I don't need to, I need to walk through the, the town center again. The Eastdale, I believe, again, that testimony carries, uh, should carry through the discussion, uh, here. Um, uh, but I want to focus on the, really, the, the north side of the site. And again, uh, 44 is on your, uh, on your right here, and the Eastdale Avenue is, is really the, the commercial Main Street that we're talking about. And right here in the middle.
You got the wrong thing up.
Yeah, Jeff, you have to change the, we're still seeing the old screen with the monument sign.
Screen sharing is paused.
You want to maybe undo the screen sharing and then start it up with the new?
Let me see how to undo this.
There, has that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, okay, now can you, now you're seeing the north side?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. So again, the residential area is back here. Commercial area, our Main Street, um, is right here with Eastdale Avenue perpendicular to 44. And we're talking about this lot here, Lot 11W. And there are four, what we call, commercial cottages on this site. Um, and again, the, the, here's where the, the zoning code, I think, doesn't quite match some of the, the needs here. There are multiple tenants on a single lot, but the, uh, code only allows one wall or projecting sign per lot. So we think it was, was one of those items that, uh, that, that didn't quite, um, uh, work through as we were, as we're developing it. So we have tenants who are scheduled to open, um, as early as, as August. And so tonight's meeting is important to give the signmakers enough time to, to make the right signs, uh, to be installed on those, uh, for those, uh, uh, those special users. So here's a blow-up of Lot 11W. Um, the, the four, uh, the four lots, they range, the four, uh, users range from 500 to 600 to 60 square feet. They're little buildings. There's a green out front and a bandstand, uh, lots of, uh, lots of, of, uh, concrete, uh, sidewalk in front. And it's a very pedestrian-oriented, uh, uh... And it's a very pedestrian-oriented, uh, uh, block here. It's bounded by Eastdale Avenue across the front, uh, Founder's Way on one side and Town Center Drive on the other. And really a parking area and some residences back, uh, back behind the, uh, back behind the cottages. Um, so we have four cottages. Cottage D two has applied for a sign permit, so there, they've taken all of the allowable wall and projecting signs. There aren't any more that allow them to be, uh, under the code. So, uh, Cottage D one, Yield Gift Shop, is requesting three signs that, uh, they need variances. Again, small signs, there were twelve square foot wall sign on the side elevation, um, a nine square foot wall sign in front, and of five square foot projecting sign. Modest, uh, attractive signs. We'll talk about it, look at them in a second. And again, here, the, the planning board was involved in creation of the comprehensive sign plan, and we reviewed the, uh, these elements with the, uh, with the, the planning board and as part of architectural review with the planning board as well. Uh, so here's the, uh, here's the front elevation. This is the nine square foot, uh, Yield Gift Shop sign. Um, I, I think the other thing I wanna, I wanna say about signs is commercial tenants, and it's true throughout Main Street. To really create a, uh, a town center, you need to have signage that varies from user to user. Uh, we need some, we need flexible design, uh, design guidelines. Each user is an individual, individual characteristics, and that shine, that, 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 uh, that individuality needs to kinda shine through in the signage as much as possible. We really don't want all the signage to look the same. We place these after the same. And it's important, if you look at, uh, at, at town centers, how that, uh, how that, how that plays out. So again, here's our, uh, here's our nine square foot sign, Yield Gift Shop. I should say that they are, they are a candle shop, uh, foremost, which is why you have the candle as part of the, uh, important part of the, the sign itself. Um, on the side, this is a corner building, so it, 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 uh, it borders, borders on, um, Founder's Way. So we have twelve square feet on the, uh, on the sign. And this elevation happens to show the, the five foot, uh, hanging sign as well. It's on the front elevation, but you can't see it unless you're, you know, walking down the sidewalk. You know, these signs play a role for both the driving public and pedestrians. This is a, a designed as a very, you know, park and, uh, and walk, um, neighborhood. So you can see that there's not a lot of parking in front of these buildings. Parking is behind dispersed throughout. So the idea is you will, you will park, you will walk. And so the signs are, um, an identifier on the side in front, so people can see, oh, that's, those are the users that are on the site there. And then those projecting signs are really key to somebody looking down a sidewalk to see where exactly is the, the candle shop or the next application, where is the ice cream shop, so they can, they can, they can find them. So all these signs play a very important role in the success of the, uh, of these users. Um, you know, I, I, I show these elevations, the, uh, this is the, the inside elevation and this is the rear elevation. Those signs proposed, um, uh, and this is the, this is the whole sign package. Uh, no freestanding signs. This is, again, that's something that, uh, that we're looking, uh, to allow, and I don't think that the town is looking to allow in these, uh, these lots. But, uh, we do have these three signs. And then obviously some, some window graphics that'll be on the, on, on, on various users, but those aren't, uh, those don't require variances. Um, same, same five tests. Undesirable change in the, uh, in the neighborhood? We think the answer is clearly no. Um, uh, this is, this is the commercial section of a mixed-use development, and the signs are part of an integrated signage plan. Uh, the signage has to be attractive, has to be effective, and we think we've, we've accomplished that, uh, with, with, with this, this sign package. Um, and with the variances, the signage is gonna be typical of a town center, uh, in the northeast and consistent with the, uh, with the town plan. Uh, can the benefit be achieved without an area variance? Uh, no. Um, because no signs are allowed since, uh, D two took a, a sign permit. Uh, there are no signage which can be, uh, gotten without a, uh, without a variance. Um, and as I said before, because Cottage D is, uh, D, D two is on the, I'm sorry, D one on the corner, needs to be visible from both the motor and pedestrian traffic. Um, are the signs substantial? No. Um, don't believe they're substantial at all. And we do believe they're the minimum, uh, to convey, uh, convey the message. They're very small. Twelve square feet, nine square feet, five square feet, uh, small signs. Uh, will it have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Um, again, no. Um, because the signs are integral to all of the neighboring uses, the variances won't have an impact. Um, uh, they will have a, they will have a, they will have an impact, will have a positive impact. Creating successful tenants here is what gives, uh, is what's gonna give, uh, Eastdale Village, gonna give, uh, Eastdale Avenue the critical mass it needs to be successful. So the signage is, as you know, you see them all the time, uh, signage is, uh, is critical to, uh, to, to retail tenants. And is it, uh, self-created? Uh, the hardship? And we, we believe the answer is no. Um, these are, uh, related to, um, again, I really think of, uh, just, uh, uh, one of the things that, that wasn't, um, wasn't anticipated as the, uh, as the zoning code was, was originally written. Uh, so I'm stopped there. I wanna talk about, um, Cottage, uh, D one, Yield Gift Shop.
Might as well look at the other one at the same time, right?
Yeah. Why don't we just look at the other one now, Jeff? So we, uh, since the considerations are basically the same.
Oh, sure. Okay.
But Lisa, while he's setting that up, number sixteen, um, it looks like that it's just advertised for one projecting sign? It, it looks like is, in the application, he wants four additional signs.
There are four signs on that lot. Uh, three, uh, three, four, eight, one.
Are you looking for a variance for the two windows and the awning and the projecting sign?
The window signs are not, don't require variances?
What about the awning?
I think that the restriction to the number of signs, I don't remember about the awning. I'd have to look. Um, I thought it was, the restriction was to the number of wall or projecting signs.
Right. It's not to the number of signs. It's, uh, it's to the, well, I think it is, because only one is allowed. So it is the number, one's allowed per lot. The awning sign does not trigger the need for a variance. I think it was...
I think that's correct. I think it was a wall or, only wall or projecting signs were limited to one, and I think the awning signs could be contrib, considered separately.
Well, they are considered separately. There's a, there's a, there's a separate discussion of awning signs. They are not, uh...
Right.
They are not, they are neither wall nor projecting. There's three categories.
Okay.
In the same way that the window signs did not require a variance.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So again, for the record, the, uh, my, my preamble, uh, on, uh, on, on D one, I'd like for the record to be part of the, the D three record. Um, and then the specifics on, uh, on B three, it's an ice cream store. Um, the architecture, again, the architecture on these four cottages, uh, vary a little bit. Uh, didn't want, didn't want four cookie cutter buildings there. So you can see the gable here runs the opposite direction. Uh, so you have your gable roof, uh, looking at you instead of the, instead of the open gable, where you could have a, uh, have a, have a sign above the door. Um, so what Spoons has, uh, has looked at in their, uh, their signage package on the front, uh, is, uh, the awning sign, which doesn't require variance, and the, uh, and the window signs. And then what you can't see here is a projecting sign. When you look at the side, uh, the side variant, the side elevation, you can see the five-point four square foot projecting sign, and that's the subject of variance, uh, for this, uh, for this building. Again, no signage on, uh, either side, uh, or the rear. Um, I don't know, it's a really only signage, uh, proposed for, uh, this user, the ice cream shop. Spoons is, uh, is the, on the front, and it's really the five-point four square feet for the, uh, for the projecting sign.
So Paul, I just confirmed, um, two-ten-one-twenty-five-C says awning signage not to exceed twelve square feet and limited to a single line of text, not more than eight inches high, is permitted.
Okay.
So they don't need a variance, and it doesn't count against this total sign number, which is...
Okay. Thanks.
Not... Welcome.
So I think the, uh, the, uh, legal notice would have been, because it's one lot, would have been for the four signs, which are in excess of the sign that Cottage D two got. So one of the signs is for D three, three of the signs for, uh, for D one.
Jeff, did D two actually get its sign yet? Or did they just file for it?
Um, I have not seen that they've got a permit. Um, uh, if you wanna see the D two sign, I actually have that.
No. I don't, I think the board is probably good, but I leave that up to them.
Okay. That's the mac, and by the way, that's the macaroon shop. I, I need to, very sorry, plug her for a second. Uh, but there is a macaroon shop, uh, in the, uh, in that, in that cottage as well, and very excited to have them on, uh, on the site. And they're the one that's, um, uh, the, these three are, uh, are really pushing to open as soon as they can and, uh, in, in early to, to, to early mid-August. So we're, we're working a way to get them, uh, get them up and, and running. So, uh, same five questions, really kind of the same five answers. No undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, no detriment to the users. We're in, we are in the commercial section of, uh, Eastdale Village, and we need attractive, we need effective signage. Um, uh, we need signage that's consistent with, uh, with a town center. Uh, we can't get the benefit without an area variance. Um, and, uh, as I discussed before, you know, a mix of signs is typical in what you'd see in a Main Street district, and that's what, uh, we're looking to achieve here. Uh, this is not a substantial variance. Uh, we're asking for five-point four square feet. Um, it won't have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the district. Um, and this is not, uh, self-created. This is, again, a, a function of, uh, um, how we, we looked, um, uh, to develop the town center. And I will say that, um, for many of the users, we have, uh, created subdivisions, and so you have one owner as a tenant on a lot, zero lot lines. And so not every lot has, uh, has multiple tenants and multiple users, but there are some lots where there are, uh, there are, there are multiples. This is one of those, uh, one of those, uh, locations where, again, we need, uh, I need to, uh, to, to, some, some help from you to, to make the, to make it work, how it's supposed to work. So, thank you.
Just to point out too, for the board members, um, and I mentioned this in the staff report, was that, uh, we are working to set, uh, create a new set of, uh, sign regulations for the MHC district. Uh, that's already in front of the town board. It's on for a public hearing in August. Um, hopefully we won't have to do variances for every one of these buildings in the, in the future, but, um, you know, as Jeff said, these particular tenants are eager to open up in August, and so this is the, the route that is required to do that.
Can you tell me the height of that projecting sign? How, how high is the bottom of it off the, off the sidewalk?
Um, you know, I don't, uh, know the numbers off the top of my head. I know the minimum that, uh, that, that you put these things up is, uh, is seven feet. Um, I don't think I'd have the heights identified on this plan.
Okay. That's all I have. Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right. Any member of the public wish to comment on, on any of those, uh, variances regarding Eastdale?
Again, you would use star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
Okay. Hearing done, and I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So, um, Jeff, before we move on, I have a question. Um, you were talking about seeker earlier and, and talking about how the sign, the, at least the monument signs were covered by the finding statement for the...
Yes. Yes. It's been a coordinated review, so my, my assumption is that all along, the seeker has reviewed the, uh, the signage.
Were the monument signs shown on the plans or at least a general location of where they were, if that's a planning board review?
Yes.
Okay.
Both actually, the monument signs, the location and the sign face, uh, this actual, the same twenty-one square foot sign, although it wasn't, wasn't called out as twenty-one square feet, but the, the exact same, uh, sign detail is, uh, is on the, uh, the approved site plans.
Okay. That's, was my recollection also. So I think for the board's purposes, then, you don't need to do a separate seeker analysis for the two monument signs, but I think we probably should just do one to cover bases for the, um, candle shop and the spoon sign, since they would not have been shown on the plans, um, in the detail where they are. So I think it's just buttons and suspenders, belts and suspenders to get the board to do it. And just for the board, also, I disagree with Jeff about whether they're self-created hardship, um, because it is an issue with the code, but, um, if you don't, if you wanna do something that is not compliant with the current code, it is a self-created hardship under the case law. So, but as Mike pointed out, as time goes by, hopefully there won't, this won't be an issue anymore, so.
So then nothing is self-created? Is that the, uh, the, the final ruling?
There are very few things that are not self-created, uh, if you need a variance.
Oh, good. Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll...
And my staff report, my staff report does reflect that, so, um, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
These, the signs that are on these buildings, they will not ask for any additional signage. Any, they're, they're not gonna want, uh, pedestal sign at the actual entrance into the community, is...
Right. Right. Well, and one of the things we're doing is, um, again, the, the town board right now has before it a, a new section of code for the district that I think, you know, more thoroughly, uh, describes the signage for this district and what they, you know, they're not looking for a lot of signage, uh, you know, for the individual businesses, um, other than what's on, on the buildings. So it's, you know, that will resolve a lot of these kinds of questions, but unfortunately we don't have that yet.
Right. Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna recall number seven, Jeanette Kilmeier, fourteen Patricia Road. Is the applicant present? All right. I don't hear any response, so I'll make a motion to adjourn item number seven until August tenth.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. All right. Um, I would like to take a short break.
Five minutes.
Till tomorrow?
We'll do, uh, five minutes? What do you think?
Five minutes.
Yeah. Is that enough?
All right. What's that?
I think Jennifer Van Tyle said she was.
Jennifer Karashi-Gary.
Who's Jeff Kane?
It's Jeff.
Okay. There's only more. We're back in session. Uh, this is the deliberation stage where we discuss and vote on each of the applications. Number one and two have been adjourned. Number three, I don't see right here. And so I think we can go right to number four. Foma Wash, car wash. Anybody have any comments about this? Find the--
Have the staff report.
Now, as I usually say, I think it's a, it's gonna look better than what's there now. The abandoned restaurant has been there forever. It'll put the lot to good use, and I think it'll fit in pretty well with the, um, new development next door.
Yeah. So the only concern I have is with the monument sign. So I would see a big advantage over what's permitted.
No, you're probably right on that one.
And, and personally, I don't know how many people are driving down the road looking for a car wash.
Destination? Or just, you know, just, I don't know, let's go get--
Yeah.
Yeah. I think once it's there, people will be, be like the other ones. They know where it is.
Right.
No, I think they could probably get away with a smaller one. You're right.
Christine?
Yeah, they, they look very similar, so I don't, I don't think there's a huge benefit to having it larger.
Okay. Tony?
You know, I, I, I personally take a little exception to the way we measure our signs with all that wasted space being considered part of it. I, I don't think, I think the smaller one looks disproportionate, uh, disproportionate to the size of the monument. If anything, I would vote, if you're not gonna go for the largest one, which I don't feel is offensive, I would go for the, um, the moderately sized sign. But I, I would, and I don't think that would be, uh, unusual or inappropriate.
All right. So because the county was against it, we'd need at least five votes for the, for a variance on the, on the monument sign.
Can we take a straw vote?
Yeah, sure.
So if we want to get there--
Who's that?
Larry? Was that you?
My voice changed.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Larry, did you have, did you want to say something about the monument sign? Or any other part of this application?
I guess on the size, I would, uh, go along with Tony. It's not the biggest in the next one.
Okay.
The intermediate.
All right. So we have to come up with reasons. Well, Art--
We have the staff report.
Okay. What do you think?
So, you know, it, going back to my reasoning about the size of the sign, the intermediate is only, what?
Twelve square feet.
A half feet over--
Twelve square feet.
Yeah, that's true.
The zone restriction.
But--
The, the killer is that, um-- power pole.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a piece of the sign, no matter what, coming from the, coming from the north. Coming from the south, you're not gonna have a problem.
Right. But you're not gonna be, nobody's gonna--
They'll turn around.
Yeah.
I could live with the medium one, as much as you don't like it. Only because of the power pole, I think. Unless they could move it back four feet, maybe, and the pole would be kinda out of the picture.
Well, I think they would, if we were only to grant the, the one, the permitted one, if we did not grant the variance for the monument, they would do whatever they needed.
Are they allowed to move it back any further?
Um, it looked like they had a little room on the plot.
I think so, but I'd have to make--
Because that would get it out of the line of sight of that pole more.
Are they likely to move it forward?
I don't think they can. I mean, they can't--
Yeah, I don't think they can. I think, um--
I think we might as--
They might be able to move it back a little bit, but I don't know. You know, they, they are concerned about people coming down, uh, with nine, with all the vegetation on the--
But that'll be cool on the western end, too.
You know, so--
It's a summer thing. Well, they're gonna make it--
Phyllis, what do you think?
--worse, too, because they're putting vegetation in. They're putting trees into it, so they're--
The medium one was all right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm really happy that the space is being used. And I really like that there's a cut through from one property to another to keep traffic off of Route 9. That was smart.
Any problems with the two-acre variance? Tony?
I have none at all. I think that's, you know, I, I think that this is an excellent use of that property. I think it's gonna, together with the other property just to the south, I think it's gonna be a great use. I'm looking forward to it.
Christine? Are you gonna get a dog saying it washed there?
I agree. What's that?
You're gonna get a dog saying it washed?
I certainly will. Yes.
Just get a stuffed dog. You don't have to worry about it. Just wash it.
Did you, Christine, did you have any other comments?
No, I, I think, I mean, I agree. I think that it's, it's, it looks very nice, the way, the way everything's laid out. And I, I have no problem with it at all.
I give him credit for that. He does a nice job on his property.
All right. Larry? Any concerns?
No, I think, again, it's a nice, looks very aesthetically good, and, uh, it's in ISO right now.
Jim, am I missing anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Uh, then Christine, you wanna make a motion?
Sure. Um, I move that the board approve the request for eight area variances in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Which variance are we granting on the eight, number eight?
Yeah, so-- Number eight, we're gonna, you're gonna make a variance to allow sixty, it's sixty-two feet? So, uh, a twelve-foot variance? Is that correct, Christine?
Let me see. That would be the intermediate sign.
Right.
Yes. So number eight would be, we approve that with the twelve-foot variance.
And Mike, is there any way we could ask?
Is that correct? Let me just look at my number here.
We'll look at that with the--
Stick the pole in the picture a little bit, maybe.
Yeah, we can look at that at the site. We still have site plan to finish up, so maybe--
You might give him a break, you know?
Yeah, yeah. We can see.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, so it passes six-zero. Good work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So is there anyone else, any other applicants here tonight?
Todd's out there smiling. That's, is that a new picture or is that a research?
Jeff Kane is here.
All right. So you want to do--
Oh, wait, no. Also, Kar, Kathy Karashi, I think she was--
Whelan is here for one of the applicants also.
Who?
I believe he was Barton.
Oh, Whelan, yeah. Whelan is here too. Yeah. So there's a few people who are here, so.
All right.
We should all go pretty quickly, though.
Yeah.
Night.
Night.
Take the rest of the night off, Jim.
Why don't we do, uh-- Let's see who's here.
Number five is here, Kathy Karashi.
Okay. So why don't we do number five?
Janneville?
Yes, Janneville, right.
That's the white fence, right?
That's the fence, right?
Yes. All right. So anybody have any problems with this? This is a, a two, a corner lot with two front yards.
Yep.
It looks like it's far enough back from the intersection that it's not gonna be any problem with--
It's way back, yeah.
With, with site.
Should be no line of sight problem at all on that property.
Yeah.
Which, you know, the other neighbor brought up, but she said she had a line of sight problem.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a little bit different.
Phyllis, any comments?
No, I think it's in line with fences throughout the township. And we have another one on the plan.
Well, you can't get pressure-treated right now, so it's white or nothing.
Oh, is that--
Pressure-treated, you put your hands on it.
But they have to, I always felt it was an overreach to tell somebody what kind of fence they could have.
Christine, anything?
Who's speak up?
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Tony?
No, I have no problem with this at all.
Okay. Larry?
No, me neither.
Okay. All right. You might do a mem, uh-- A motion? Uh, well, there's no, um-- Okay. So let me, let me, uh, offer these as, um, findings. Uh, whether an undesirable change would reduce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. There are numerous properties, uh, that have, uh, fences in the, in the front yard. This is a, um, corner lot, so it has two front yards. Uh, whether it have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, um, I don't believe it will. Again, there are similar neighborhoods, or neighborhoods, there are properties similarly situated. Whether it's substantial, uh, it's substantial in the sense that it's not prohibited in the front yard. But because this is a corner lot with two front yards, I think that negates that. And, uh, whether it's self-created, um, it certainly is because she wants to, um, have a, have a fence. Uh, but that's not a reason to deny it. And I would offer those as findings.
Wait, um, if we can, I'm sorry. I'm assuming that number four, there were no environmental concerns? And I missed, um, feasible alternatives? Sorry, I wasn't writing fast enough.
Oh. Um, well, there can be no similar, there can be no other alternatives to, uh, accomplish what she wants.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they close the street down.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
So we're doing number four, correct? Or five?
We're doing number five now. And I think Lisa was asking about number four, Paul.
She was.
I know. I was asking about number four on the list of five criteria. The fact that there is no, um, environmental changes to be included from the--
Gotcha.
From the fence. I just didn't, I was not writing fast enough. I'm good now. Thank you.
I was mumbling faster. So you're, you're okay. Well, you're almost okay. As soon as you get to your motion.
Well, you stop talking. I move that the board approve the request for area, area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered by, in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, those that set forth by the chair. There's no conditions. We're not asking for any plantings or anything. Nope. So we'll--
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, that motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from Division Street?
I thought we were adjourning that to next month.
Oh, so we did. That's adjourned till next month?
Okay. I second it.
Number seven is adjourned.
Yep.
Number eight?
Nassau.
Nassau Road? Is somebody here for that?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So-- All right. So-- Any comments on this one?
I have none.
It's far enough, again, no, no line of sight in the back that we can see.
Right.
I would offer the same findings as I offered the last similarly situated application.
Does that need a second, or do you have to run through the--
No, I don't. I'm just waiting for Lisa to--
Adjuster fan.
All right. No, I'm good. Um, that's fine. You could, you just need a motion and a second for the actual--
I second, I motion, uh--
Somebody needs to read the script and make a motion.
Oh, you have to--
I have to read the script?
Somebody does.
No.
Somebody does.
Phyllis, you make a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visit by the board members. In approving this variance, the chair adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries six-zero. Okay. And so the next one is, uh, number nine, sixteen Cathy Lane, the special use permit. Anybody have any comments about that? Any problems?
Like I said, Christine and I, we stopped by and they invited us in, which is unusual, I think. It showed us what they had planned, and it's gonna be, one of the kids is gonna be living there, and a granddaughter, so.
Yeah.
You're gonna have two newly aggressors. It's gonna be separate from the house, so I think, I don't see any problem at all. It's a big house.
It is a big house.
Lots of room.
All right. All right.
You do have a staff report?
Yep. So, let me make this motion. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number nine, based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members who were let in, and the staff report. And it meets its criteria and set forth in the town code, so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You do need to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You do need to just give it a neg deck first.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that the ZBA find that there are no other interested or involved, I to do, just.
Just the neg deck.
Okay, so. I move that the ZBA find that the granting of the application for a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment to the single-family residence would not have an adverse effect on the environment and therefore issue a negative declaration. Is there a second?
Second.
You're third.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. I am one recusal, so. And, do we vote on the?
Now we gotta vote on that.
Okay, and so I might, was there a second to my motion? To accept the, to approve the special use permit? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And again, one recusal, that passes.
Who is the recusal?
Ms. Capone.
Thank you.
Number ten, forty-seven Kingwood Drive.
Close to the public hearing and the garage.
Right. So, Tony, do you mind making a motion? Well, first of all, does anybody have any problems with the addition? It goes, it's in line, it's just an addition above the garage. The garage may or, may or may not be too close to the side lot line. So if you were to make a motion and approve this, I would just make sure that it's subject to it not being any closer to the side lot line than the existing garage.
Right. All right. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of the site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that's set forth by the chair, and also that the, the addition will not be any closer than the existing line of the house to the property line.
I suppose I should make some findings, huh?
What's that?
We need findings, the chair did not set any.
Yes, all right, so let me make these findings for you to accept.
You want, okay, you do it, okay.
Yeah, whether an undesirable cha, change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, I don't see that, I don't see there be any undesirable change. This is simply putting an addition on top of, of the house. It does not encroach upon any further on the side lot line. Whether it can be sought by the applicant, by some other method feasible by the applicant to pursue, based upon the topography of the area, she can't do, they can't do anything behind the house, and it's kind of spread out, there's no, there's not enough room on the right side of the house, so this is the only place really to put the addition. Whether the request is substantial, substantial, and I suppose in the sense that it's an encroachment on the lot line, but it's, it's no greater encroachment than what exists already with the garage, and it can have, whether it will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, again, based upon the topography and the existing vegetation, I don't see that it'll have any impact on the environment. And whether it was self-created, of course it is self-created because it's the applicant's desire to put an addition on above a garage, which is already encroaching upon the side lot line, but that is not a reason to accrue the granting. And I offer those findings. Regarding the addition.
By the chair.
Okay, so we have a motion by Tony, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, that carries six-zero as for the addition to the, for the addition. Number eleven is twenty-three Stephanie Lane.
Just a question?
Go ahead.
I see we have Mr. Wellen from Water Street still here, should we be addressing his application?
Okay, why don't we do number twelve? Any, anybody have any problems, any issues with this one?
It's the addition, right?
Right. Okay, then let me make these findings.
We had nothing to many neighbors, correct?
Yeah, nobody. Is this an unlisted action?
It is a type two.
Okay. So whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by the granting of this area variance, I do not think so. Each of, these are, this property's been there for a long time. This is really, the variance just deals with an addition which does not encroach any further on the rear lot line than the existing structure. Whether it can be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than the area variance, I don't think that, that can, that can happen, based upon the size of the lot. Whether it's substantial, it's not substantial in the sense that it's, it just continues the line of the existing house. And whether it will have an adverse effect on the, on the physical or environmental conditions, I don't see that there would be any of that. And whether it's self-created, of course it's self-created as the addition is, is what the applicant was, wishes, but based upon the existing structure of the house, it's no reason to deny the application, and I offer those findings.
Second one.
Larry, can you do thi, can you make a motion?
Yeah. We're on twelve, right?
Correct.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number twelve. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the findings of the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's, motion carries six-zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you too.
And now regarding thirteen through sixteen.
Number eleven?
Yeah, wanted to do eleven first, already wanted to do since Jeff's been here.
Well, Jeff Kane.
Oh, he's still here, okay.
So. Any issues with, with that? Anybody have any issues? First of all, we'll go with the monuments, any, any problems with the monuments?
They're small, they look nice.
Yeah. Okay, pretty reasonable. And how about the signs on the shops?
Again, they're not overly large, you know, the, the two corner ones, I agree, they need something on each road, the sides. The hanging sides, hanging off the building, they're small. I don't think I really care. I think right now these businesses need every opportunity they can get to get traffic in there.
And they look very nice.
Yeah, I did, right, for the, for the two build, for the building signs, I guess those would be, we would, there's a short EAF for that, so we would do a neg deck on those.
Okay. So do I have to move with lead agency or just a negative declaration?
Just a negative declaration, there's no else.
So I move that the ZBA find that the granting of the application for the signs in items fifteen and sixteen will not have an adverse effect on the environment and therefore issue a negative declaration. Is there, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Okay, so that carries. And, all right, you want to do this one?
No. We're just doing the.
I think you could do the, the staff report goes, covers everything, so.
Right, so you can do thirteen through sixteen as one.
Oh, okay, just, we're just doing the regular approval, right?
Yeah.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in items thirteen through sixteen. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members, and findings by the staff, staff report. Right, had brain freeze there, it's getting late. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that's set forth by the chair and the staff reports. No restrictions, so move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Okay, that carries, six-zero. And now twenty-three Stephanie Lane.
Thank you, I really appreciate your help, have a good night.
Aye.
Yeah. What do you think about the deck?
Well, he's confused whether he's gonna attach it or not, but I guess it's attached. He did not answer your question as to how high the roof was gonna be.
No.
I don't, I wonder if he didn't really know. Liker hadn't thought about it in that way.
In that case, do we make an assumption? It's gonna be eight to ten feet? Pretty much the norm, right?
Well, would you assume that, or would you give them the variance? And make that a stipulation, right? I don't know.
You'd say that the, can't be any higher than the, the house, so is it a single-story house, or is it?
Yeah, it could be, it could be pretty high. There probably, the gate would need to a roof, well, they'd be blowing under it. Instead of ten-foot limit? Can we do that? Lisa, can we do that?
The short answer is yes, you can, if you want to, but I'd be very specific, I would allow, because I don't know if it's planned to be a peaked roof, a flat roof.
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah.
I see, I see.
I mean, that seems a bit low if you have, if you want eight-foot clearance and then a four-on-twelve on top. But I, I'm not an architect or an engineer, so I don't know. I would hate to have this guy, you know, have a squashed deck because the board was a foot short, but.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, he's got some kind of a drawing in the back, but I don't know what it, dimensions on it.
I think a standard garage, does the code, does the code say not more than fifteen feet or something, somewhere in there? But I'm not, I'm not sure. After ten o'clock, I don't make any firm statements.
The last four months have spoiled you.
No, actually, we've had a few long planning board meetings, so definitely not spoiled. Yeah, I'm not sure, is there, hold on, let's.
Should we say fifteen feet? I'm sure that's not gonna exceed what his need is gonna be for it.
For the, for the deck to the top, to the peak.
I'm checking what the, whether there's a restriction, this is an R-20, right? On this thing. Accessory structures may have a maximum height as part of two, ten, sixteen, eight, one, second. Nope, not in there. Looking at help with that.
Can I ask, he's, he's got like this six over.
How was the video?
Twelve hitch, what is that?
That's just the hitch and the roof? So it's.
Well, it's pretty steep though, right? Isn't four-twelve the, the standard? Or is, is that flat or not?
He's got, yeah, his is a little steep.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Final signing.
Final signing?
That's what it says.
On a deck?
Well, it looks like it's like it's gonna be like a shed.
He didn't say there's gonna be walls on it.
So here's the, okay. If it were not attached and it were considered an accessory structure, it would be not sheds, if it were a shed, less than eight feet in height, you can put up to six feet of, by the property line. So I would think you want something, you know, I, this isn't going that close to the property line.
Four feet. It's a four-foot variance.
But why doesn't it need signing?
Well, if you look, it's kind of hard to tell, but on the, on the picture, it looks like there's gonna be part of it that's open and part of it's gonna have a wall, or.
My guess would be that it's open on the deck, on the existing deck, right?
I'm trying to, I'm looking at this picture and I'm trying to figure out what that is showing us, but.
Well, it's actually have a four, forty-eight inch high wall. Right?
Yeah, and then it looks like it's open, and then there's a roof.
Yeah. It doesn't have sides on it, does that, does it matter if it has sides? Do you care? That doesn't make any difference, right? I guess not.
Yeah, if you're gonna do an outdoor kitchen, you would want some sort of a wall. He didn't say what he was using it for, but if he's putting his grill on there or whatever, he may want, I don't know.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Right, the board can decide on the height.
I'm trying to remember what, so what do we say, would be the same as a shed?
Well, sheds, I would think sheds are lower typically than what this would be, and what this says, you can allow a shed only six feet off the property line, as long as it's eight feet tall or less. So I would think, you know, since this is sixteen feet off the property line, you can go a bit taller. And it's a thing that we don't have any height measurement. It does look like a fairly steep roof if he's going six-twelve.
Six-twelve, six over twelve, yeah.
And it's not gonna be ground level, right? Because the.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same level as the existing.
Deck, so the roof could really stick out.
I guess we could find out what the, what it's gonna be in June.
I don't think the board has before any information that would give you an idea of the height, the proposed height of the deck. I don't even know, do we know how, how high is the existing deck off the ground?
We don't even know that.
Four feet, right? It was about, about the lever in the pool.
We couldn't stay fifteen feet off the ground, because we don't know how high the deck is.
But did anyone, were you able to see the existing deck when you visited the site, or not?
It's the same level as the pool, right?
Forty-eight, roughly fifty inches, forty.
This deck was to be constructed, as I understood.
It's constructed next to an existing deck, or am I on the wrong application?
Yeah, you're right.
So I was, and he said it was gonna be the same level as the existing deck, so I was trying to.
Oh, I got you.
If we knew how tall the existing deck was off the ground.
It was the same level as the pool, right?
Pretty much, within.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So I would think the board would want to measure its height from the top of the deck, because if you measure it from the ground and you're guessing at what that height is, then you have issues. Maybe twelve feet over the top of the deck?
That would seem more than enough for a covered deck.
Yeah, I think so.
Sure.
Okay. And let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance, there will not be any undesirable changes to the neighborhood property. by granting of the area variance, uh, there will not be any undesirable changes to the neighborhood properties. Other properties have decks. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible, other than area variance, based upon the existing structure, uh, there's no other way to do this without a variance. Whether it's substantial. It's a four-foot variance, it's not particularly substantial. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, I don't see any adverse or environmental conditions. And whether it's self-created, it's certainly self-created. However, that's not a reason to deny the variance. And I offer those, um, as findings.
Well, second that.
Phyllis, do I do it, please?
No. I move, what number is it?
Eleven.
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 I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eleven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and as a result of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. And we put a height?
Yeah.
And add condition that the top of the roof of the covered deck be not more than twelve feet from the top of the decking floor. Thank you. So move.
Second.
Amen.
Okay, so now we have to do Hinckley.
Oh, wait, wait, did we vote on it?
Wait, he didn't vote.
Oh, should we, should we vote on it?
Sorry.
All right.
Was Tony second on that one?
I second it.
Thank you, Tony.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, then it passes. All right. Number, number three, Hinckley, plates. So.
I just hope he gets, so he agreed to. Because when he first started out tonight, it sounded like he was right back to square one.
So, I think based upon, um, our conversation with the applicant and his testimony tonight, earlier he said, or at the last meeting, he said that he really only needed a nine-foot wide, um, garage. That would necessitate at least a four-foot variance. Tonight, I think he agreed to, um, a four-foot variance for the side. Um, I don't have a problem with remaining at a two-feet rear lot, because,
Nothing you do there.
Can't do anything.
Now, Paul, you say a four-foot variance.
I got a question, are we talking about a four-foot variance? Or are we talking about four feet off the property line?
So a sixteen-foot variance?
Yeah.
It's not sixteen feet, no.
I got confused during that discussion.
We're setting it back.
Because we kept saying four-foot variance, four-foot variance, but that would mean a sixteen-foot variance.
No.
If he was four feet from the property line.
It's a, it's a garage, it's an accessory structure, so it only requires ten feet.
Right.
Okay, so.
Four feet off the property line, it's a variance of six feet, is that right, Paul?
That's right.
Yes. Thank you.
So, question.
Yes. Yes.
So we're really talking about six-foot variance, not a four-foot variance?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, when we talked to him, we drew the chalkline, and the last time he agreed on the four feet, more or less. Now, he's going to have to break that concrete out of there as well. So that floor, I don't know if he knows that, that floor has to go back as well. Right? That can't remain under property.
Well, at least the part that's on his neighbor's property.
Now, but, if, Lisa, if, if the, if the floor of that garage is less than the four feet, that's still part of the garage, correct?
Well, I don't know the answer, if you had, so suppose he was constructing new, and you wanted to put, it's more like a patio or something, off, and I think that would also require a variance. So, what I would suggest is the board make it the condition now, and then if he wants to leave the slab, he can come back and talk to us. But, um, I think Art's right, that as a technical matter, the slab in that four feet has to go.
Right, has to be reduced to the, where the new wall is going to go.
Right, the garage should be the garage and the,
Okay.
Concrete slab underneath it should be removed.
The other, the other thing that he agreed to was the runoff would be diverted down their property line, and across the back of his property line, and go back to his property, not onto hers, and not onto the neighbor behind him. He made that agreement, um, verbally, when we were there, we discussed it, so I don't know. Again, Lisa, can we hold him to that?
The board can put whatever conditions it deems reasonable, as long as it's within the requirements of the code, and if one of your considerations is the environmental issues with granting a variance, if you find that part of the mitigation of that is to require that all runoff remain on site,
Right.
that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, you can't go on her property, that's the thing, right? You can't, you can't put runoff on your neighbor's.
So the runoff has to remain on site.
On his property, right. But to him, I mean, I, I, I don't know if you talked to him, I'm not trying to give the guy a hard time, but to him, on-site means it runs off the edge of his roof and it stays on his property. But we all know, the way that's laid out, it's going to go into her garage. That's why he told us that he would run gutters down, across the back of the house, and then the drainpipe onto his property, to keep it away from her garage.
What's the pitch in the neighbor's house behind? Because there's a fence.
Fence stops at the front of the garage.
But, but there's a fence in the back of that yard, and there's about two feet between the end of the garage and the next fence. But the, oh, I took pictures. So, the water will just go under the fence, if it's not.
There's no fence between those garages.
No, no, no.
Oh, the backyard.
Between the people behind them.
He's on, he's over, he's, he's violation anyway. I don't know.
So what you're saying though is you want to make sure the water's not going to go?
The neighbor has made it clear that she wants the water to be, not run onto her property and undermine her garage, like it's going down, starting to rock her, the bottom wall of her garage.
And then the same would be true for the, the property behind.
Right.
You want, you want to make sure the water doesn't.
You don't want it diverted onto their property.
Right.
I mean, will there be some? Sure there will. You don't want it all.
Right.
And what do you want to do about the deck? We granted a, a foot and a half.
Off of the back?
On the side. The deck on the side.
It's a carboard. Look at the garage, the left-hand side.
Deck on the house.
Oh, that deck, the one he said he tore down.
Yeah.
The one that's still there.
Yeah.
He was told he had to take it down. Told us he did. Moved by the other day, he didn't.
So, he, no, he's applying for a variance for the deck, he was granted a var, a new variance. He was granted a variance to allowing it to be one and a half feet from the property line in 2010. And it turns out it's one foot from the property line. So he's actually asking for a six-foot, six-inch additional variance, but, um, based above what he got in 2010. But it's essentially, for the board's purposes today, a variance of nineteen feet. But it's really six inches over what he got in 2010. And I don't know, did he, was he the owner? He wasn't, because he just bought this on tax bill.
He bought, it's rented, he bought the property, he did the house, it's rented now.
Right, no, I'm just, I was, he was not the one who constructed the deck in the wrong spot, was my question.
No, he bought it as is, uh, he stuck with it.
So the question really is whether the board is going to allow him the extra six inches.
What does anybody think?
Well, I think it's okay, it was previously granted, and it was measured wrong, so we have to give him another six inches, so that he can keep the deck. Is that right?
Yeah.
If we grant it. Okay.
Either it was measured wrong, or the person in 2010 built it wrong, you know, intentionally or unintentionally, but.
Apparently that deck used to go to the back of the house. And he lopped that off because it didn't meet code. My concern, seeing what, at least what we've been going through so far, is that if we grant that deck, and I'm okay with granting it, is he going to tack onto it again and run it down the side of the house?
Well, he would need a variance for that.
Well, we know that.
I don't think you can assume, Art, that someone is going to do something illegal.
Okay. I think you always can, assume that.
And you're a lawyer, you know, come on, come on. I'm, I don't, no, whatever you want to do, I'm okay.
All right. All right, let me make these findings. Uh, I offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to the properties created by the granting of the area variance. Regarding the side lot line for the garage, granting this variance will correct the existing, um, overlay onto the neighbor's property.
Paul, excuse me, have we specified what the variance is?
Well.
So this is what I have for the variances, four foot from the, off the side property line for a six-foot variance, two feet, four point six-two-five inches from the rear, for a, requiring a variance of seven point seven-three-five, and then nineteen feet, um, off the, for the deck where twenty feet is required, one foot off the deck, sorry, so it's a nineteen-foot variance.
Okay, I was, I was just concerned about that side, that we weren't still stuck on four.
Right, six-foot variance, four-foot setback.
Okay. Sorry.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved, received by some method, based upon the size of the lot, it's impossible for him to do anything without getting a variance. Whether the, it's substantial, it is indeed substantial. However, regarding the, um, variance for the deck, we had already granted, uh, almost the entire variance, it was just either mis, mis-measured or mis-built. The rear lot line is existing, and the side lot line for the garage is a relief of a current situation. And whether it will have an adverse effect, I believe that, um, it will help alleviate some problems. And of course, this is self-created, uh, since it was purchased this way, uh, with all the violations. But that's not a reason to deny, uh, each of the variances. Tony, you want to do this one? And I, I offer those as findings.
Second that.
No, wait a second.
Drop this last week.
Sorry about that. Okay, I, uh, make a motion to approve the area variance request. And, uh, in item number, it would be three. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance. Decision is based on a review of the application, a testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, uh, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Do you want to add a condition that the pad of the garage must meet that?
Definitely.
So the slab would have to be cut back to meet that four foot.
Slab, uh, the garage and the slab, uh, sit on the same footprint.
And then also the runoff would be redirected, right, as we talked about this.
Retained on site.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second, oh, second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Larry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Um, is there any other business? That I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell me about that motion.
I don't know if I want to second that.
You're home already. Go to bed.
I'm having so much fun.
Go to bed.
All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Regarding, uh, Division Street, how do you want to set up whether, meeting with the builder?
I know a lot of people don't like it, but I, I think in a case like this, I just can't wrap my head around all this. I would like to meet.
Right, put up a model.
Yeah, let them do a, a cardboard model on a rainy day, and have them fly balloons like they made church off do down for the, see what that roof's going to be. I would like to be down there with the builder and get some idea of.
All right, how can we facilitate that, Sonja?
Well, you know, I think it's in the applicant's, uh, benefit to be able to be accessible to us two, that, two times.
Right.
Is the applicant local? I, I got the idea that she wasn't a local.
Division Street.
Division Street, no, she's not local.
No.
Okay.
She's in city.
What was the question about local?
Yeah.
Is she local or not?
I don't know if she is, but, uh, her builder should be.
Yeah, builder.
I don't, I don't know that we need her, we need the person who's going to walk us through and ask, answer the questions.
So does the board want a formal, um, you know, where, more than a,
The neighbors expressed some interest in, of, you know.
No, we're on still.
The twenty-second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, we hear a lot of chatter, at least I do.
Okay. Um, if the neighbors expressed an interest, if, if the board's going to meet as a field trip, I suppose.
We should do it properly then.
Yeah. Try that.
Do you think it's a good idea to have the neighbors there?
Uh, I think that they're entitled to, they requested it.
Can't keep them away.
That's not, I don't think that's our obligation. Uh, but I think, but I think it's, I think it's, uh, you know, uh, it'd be who's the, the builder, to have more definite plans to be able to display in person, or, you know, in a shared screen. Something that, uh, delineates the project a lot more, so we don't have to do these kinds of things. But I think if you invite the neighborhood, excuse me, you're just going to get into a pissing war.
Right.
All right, we, we are still being recorded, right?
Yes, we are.
Oops.
So if you want to have a site visit, um, we can announce, you know, I would facilitate with the builder when it is, and it's, I don't believe that they're technically public meetings, subject to the open meeting law requirements that you have noticed, et cetera, because nothing is ever supposed to be discussed there in terms of, um, any approvals, or any conditions, or anything like that. You simply go to stand on the space and say, show me where this is, tell me where this is. So, um, but if the board wanted to be in, you know, transparent, you could put on the website when the board was going, if we were able to come up with that for the applicant, or not. Or we could have, you know, separate meetings where you didn't have a quorum. There are six members, if you had two meetings where three, you know, if you did it twice, where three members of the board went each time, then it's definitely not a meeting. But those are all options that the board can undertake.
I, I think you just have to make sure, if you're going to invite the public or the neighbors, that, like Paul said, this is not a question and answer, necessarily, period. This is, you know, it's a fact finding, you know.
And it also, the applicant does not, is not required to let the neighbors on his property. So, um, you know, that's up to him, or her, I guess, and the consultant. So, I mean, maybe what we should do is have, um, Mike or Sonia reach out to the applicant and see what we can facilitate in terms of their availability, and then we can go back from there, because, I mean, if we can find a time where the board can go, we can do that.
Okay. All right.
Okay? All right, Sonia, do you need these Stuart objections back? And the person that's in favor?
All right, have we adjourned yet, or? We did?
Not yet, still discussing, so.
I think the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second on the adjourn?
And a vote.
Second.
All those still in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, I really don't want to go home.
All right, I'm going to end the meeting, good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Ciao.